Good evening. I'd like to call to order the 6 o'clock Successor Agency, the Norco Community Redevelopment Agency City Council Regular Meeting, though this will be closed session for the City Council. Please show all council members present. And we don't take any public comments or anything?
If there are public comments, I don't have any cards on it.
Okay. Then we will recess to closed session. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the public session. We'll have a report of actions taken in closed session.
Yes, the City Council considered the matter listed on the closed session agenda, which is a conference of legal counsel concerning an existing litigation, and there's no reportable action.
Thank you. Kevin, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance, and then afterwards we'll have the invocation by Pastor Fred? Thank you.
Father, we come before your throne the grace by the blood of the Lamb our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We thank you, Father, for the awesome privilege to stand in your presence, oh God. Lord, we just pray for, we just ask for prayers over the city councilmen, the city attorney, the managers, oh God, the controllers, the chief of belief, the fire chief, all those who come together, oh God, to make this city a great city, oh God. And I just pray that you will just continue to use these minds of these great men and women to do your will. We know that there are many forces out there coming against godly cities, and this is a godly city. In God we trust. It's on their banner. So we just ask for a continual blessing of this city, that these leaders, oh God, that you have appointed, will govern your people, God, in a manner that you will be pleased. We ask you this now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, we were going to have an introduction of the Arupa Valley Sheriff Station's new captain, but as of today, the new captain has not been named, so this introduction will have to be rescheduled. And I certainly don't want to see your name on that list, Eric. Is President Brian, Brian Reese is with the, our new president of Norco College. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and thank you to all the citizens here of Norco. I've been, my name's Brian Reese. Dr. Reese, I am president of Norco College. I've been here two and a half weeks, so... My office is going to be setting up some appointments with many of you individually so we can get to know each other on an individual basis, but I wanted to come here tonight and introduce myself to all of you. The students at Norco College and the employees at Norco College, many of them are citizens of Norco, so we all share a group of people that we want to help nurture and inspire and build a beautiful life for them. So I really want to come and just extend my hand to you and say that I want to be a good partner with you. I'm looking forward to working with the city and developing a long-term relationship over many years as we help improve this area for lots of citizens. You know, I grew up in Western Riverside County, the Inland Empire, and I spent a lot of years, like a lot of people who live in this area, getting on the 15 freeway in the morning and the 91 freeway and sitting there, heading out to a job in Los Angeles County or Orange County, and I feel completely blessed to now be working in the neighborhood. So it's really, really been nice. It's a great group of people there, a great group of students. So I'm looking forward to working with you in the future. I know you have a busy calendar for the evening, so I'll leave it at that. Very nice meeting all of you. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to do things a little bit different. We have some recognitions for our volunteer program, and then we're going to go right into some business appreciation awards. But we have a new member of staff with us also, Mr. Slim Petrie. And Brian, you want to step up here with us? Brian Petrie is the director of our Parks and Rec Department and the head of our volunteer program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are three volunteers in which the council would like to recognize for their outstanding volunteerism, and so I'll try and read them. We, by the way, in this city, and I call this a city of volunteers, it, we could not accomplish the things we do in this community without the support of the community and the various volunteers that come out and help us with our programs, activities, and our facilities. So I'd like to recognize first, on behalf of the City Council, Wanda Watson. Wanda? In 2016, Ms. Watson volunteered more than 287 hours at the Rose M. Eldridge Senior Center, where she is the volunteer instructor for the doll-making class. By the way, if you have never gone to one of the doll-making classes and experienced it, it is amazing, these dolls that they make. They're just beautiful. So she is a very caring person and is continuously ensuring that her students are welcome and have an enjoyable experience. Ms. Watson has volunteered at the senior center for more than 18 years. Incredible. And also volunteers with seniors and pets. Ms. Watson has lived in Norco for 40 years and dedicates her time as a volunteer so she can give back to her community that has always supported her and her family. In 2016, Ms. Duran, Ms. Duran volunteered more than 600 hours at the Norco Animal Shelter, where she assists with the variety of shelter responsibility. Ms. Duran, Mrs. Duran volunteers in the front office, where she interacts with customers, assists in animal adoption process. In addition, Mr. Duran works directly with the animals, ensuring that they are fed, exercised, and bathed. Mr. Duran will help in any way that she is needed at the shelter, making every opportunity one for an animal to be adopted. She is a very valuable member of our animal shelter team, and we could not adopt the many animals out if it wasn't for all the volunteers who do help us there. So Pauline, thank you so very much for all that you do. Our next volunteer that the council would like to recognize, Mary Warren. In the four months that Mrs. Warren has been a part of our volunteer program, she has volunteered more than 287 hours at the animal shelter and at many of our city events. Ms. Warren, who has a great love for animals, has worked directly with dogs at this animal shelter, also ensuring that they are fed, exercised, and bathed. In addition, Ms. Warren volunteered for our parade of lights, where she helped decorate for events and ensured everyone had a great time. In a very short few months of her volunteerism, Ms. Warren has dedicated many hours of her time and effort and has become a great asset to our volunteer program. Thank you so very much for all that you do. If I could, Kristin, can you please stand up? Kristin Estrada is our volunteer coordinator, and if you're interested in volunteering, and we need more volunteers, please see her, and she's great at working with you. And we do everything online, too, now, so you can register, track your hours, and do all those things. So thank you so much. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Brian. We're not done. Of course, there's a few of us that don't turn in our volunteer hours, Mr. Hoffman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're here to go ahead and acknowledge a couple of businesses in the community with the Business Appreciation Award, and I'd like to invite them up right now before I do any reading. That would be Hamburg Ford and Act One Construction. Is Act One here tonight? Okay. Sorry, dropped everything. Excuse me here. Okay, again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott DeRosa, and I'm the vice chair of the Norco's Economic Development Advisory Committee, also known as EDAC. There are so many members of our community, including businesses, that go over and beyond to help our community in many ways. So our City Council thought it would be a wonderful idea to acknowledge our local businesses for the civic contributions that we Norconians have the wonderful privilege to enjoy. To assist our City Council with this task, EDAC has stepped in each month and selected local businesses that stood out as a business that we'd like to see acknowledged for the civic contributions, which include, but are not limited to donations, sponsoring events, and increasing the economic well-being of our fine city. So tonight, it is my honor and pleasure to present to you Norco's Business Appreciation Award, actually not to you, to them, to Hamburg Ford for their contributions to our community. And Bob, would you come up here for a moment, please?
Tor.
Tor, I'm sorry. I'd like to go ahead and read what your plaque says, and then afterwards, if you have a few words that you want to say, you're welcome to do so. So the plaque here says that the City of Norco hereby honors Hamburg Ford for its leadership in the Norco business community for over three decades and its unwavering support of the City of Norco. Hamburg Ford's consistent engagement with the community has led to a partnership that represents the very spirit of Horsetown USA. Again, congratulations and thank you so much for all your contributions.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
Thank you to, you know, the city and the citizens, because, again, 37 years Hamburg Ford's existed because of the support of the city and remember, the original only dealership still here that came in when it was first proposed before the 15 freeway was even put in, the Second Street off-ramp there. So thank you.
Scott, let's go ahead and read Don Trent Holmes, Act One.
Okay, I'll let you hold that. Actually, let me go ahead and show it to you folks so you can see what it looks like. Beautiful plaque given to our businesses community. And this one reads, thank you, "The City of Norco honors Act One Construction for representing the best of Norco qualities like honesty, integrity, and commitment to community. As a contractor specialized in public facilities and equestrian-related projects, the company's contribution to the George A. Ingalls Vietnam Memorial Plaza is greatly appreciated by the Norco community." And we'd like to thank them very much, and they were the recipient of our January award, and we were just carrying it over into this month. So unfortunately, they were not able to be here, but we do appreciate everything that they do for us.
One quick thing before we get into City Council Communications. I'd like to introduce our state senator Roth's representative, Tyler. Tyler, do you have anything you'd like to update us on briefly?
I wasn't expecting you to have a list of expectations.
Sure. So much for expectations.
I'm Tyler Medary with Senator Roth's office. I'm sure I've seen most of you before. Just to give a quick update, Senator Roth is back in session with the rest of the state senate assembly. He's introduced four bills so far, including Senate Bill 37, which is to our parental effort to restore funding to the new cities of Riverside County, including Eastville and Hoover Valley, our neighbors. We're happy to have Assemblywoman Sabrina Cervantes as a partner in this effort, and we hope to negotiate with the governor's office to try to find a fix within the budget as well. So we're going to continue to work on that. Additionally, Senator Roth has two efforts to bring more judges to Riverside County. One, a funding measure, Senate Bill 38, which will fund ten new judges in the state of California, hopefully allocating some of those to Riverside and San Bernardino counties who really need them. And one new appellate judge to Riverside County. And then Senate Bill 39, which would reallocate four judgeship positions from the Bay Area to the Inland Empire. The surprise, the Bay Area has more than they need, and so we're working on reallocating to counties such as ours that are short. And it's the positions that would be reallocated, not necessarily the judges. We're not making the move down here. That proposal has been put into the governor's budget when he released his first draft proposal earlier this month, so we hope that it stays in the budget. If not, then we have a vehicle to advance that within this bill. And then lastly, we're co-sponsoring, we're sponsoring a bill with District Attorney Mike Heston. That's, it's a little grim, but it's related to domestic violence and tacking on, it's a sentence tack on for, as a violence crime for strangulation. I'm here as a resource to you all. If anyone has any questions or concerns regarding the legislation, or if you're having any issues with state agencies, I'm happy to help. And someone submitted for public comments. You'll be meeting her soon, but our new colleague, she's district director for Assemblywoman Sabrina Cervantes. I've worked with her before. She's also a classmate of mine at UC Riverside, so I hope you all will show her the same hospitality that you've shown me. I love Norco, and I'm teaching her to love Norco, too. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tyler.
Mayor, would you like to have Rachel Gonzaga come up this time?
Just going to ask.
Okay.
Good evening.
Mayor, City Council members. Hello, everyone. My name is Rachel Gonzaga. I'm currently serving as district director for Assemblymember Sabrina Cervantes. Just to provide a brief update in regards to legislation that our office is doing, in addition to what we are co-sponsoring with Senator Roth's office in order to get more judges here, we are currently, we have introduced two pieces of legislation. The first is AB 91. What this would do would open up the carpool lane during non-peak traffic hours in order to try to get the congestion, to ease the congestion we all have been experiencing. In addition, we have introduced AB 162. What this bill would do would actually increase what is considered a small business from $2 million to $4 million solely for the purpose of the opportunity to apply for the California Competes Tax Credit. What we're hoping this would do is allow more businesses to apply in order to keep them here, especially in the 60th Assembly District. I look forward to working out with all of you, and I know we're in the process of currently scheduling some meetings. Currently, it's myself and a staff of two more, so we're stretched a little thin, but as Tyler mentioned, and just to echo it, we're here to serve all of you. So if you ever have any issues with a state agency, please don't hesitate to contact our office as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome to Norco. Okay, well, now moving to City Council Successor Agency business items. City Council Communications and reports on regional boards and commissions. Kevin, would you like to start?
Yeah, sure. It's been actually kind of a busy week. Berwin and I attended John Benoit's funeral, which was very nice. A lot of people turned out, and I actually thought it was quite a tribute to him. I attended the RCA, the Western Riverside Conservation Authority. They're preparing to, well, that's going very well. For those of you that don't know, what they do is if you're building something, it's a way for you to mitigate the impacts to an area so that you, like, for example, if there's an owl or something that's in the area you want to build in, you can actually purchase land somewhere else where there's an owl. And what they're trying to do is create a corridor, a wildlife corridor, going all up through the Inland Empire, and it's actually pretty cool. WRCOG, the big news there is that we voted to allow them to move to a new building, so they'll be relocating down and around the corner. I had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Reese, which was, I sat on the committee to select the three that were selected, and he had some tough competition. And I had a very enjoyable meeting, and he's very supportive of Norco. We need to get him some cowboy boots, but he is from Crafton Hills College, which is nearby, and has some open space, and so I think it's going to be a really good partnership with the college. Save the hangar. As you know, I sit on that informal committee, and we discovered that, lo and behold, they want to tear down the hangar but didn't do any of the federal Section 106 requirements. So now we're trying to figure out a way to let elected officials know that they're really not supposed to do that, and is the federal government above the law? Do they have to follow Section 106 Historic Preservation Act or not? And technically, maybe not realistically, they're not allowed to tear down that hangar unless they've been submitting their proper paperwork. And I think that's, I went to a bunch of, oh, the Veterans Committee, I'm going to leave that to the chair, Councilman Hoffman. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, like Kevin said, we had our Veterans Executive Committee for the George Ingalls Memorial. Two big events coming up, if you can mark your calendars, March 24th and the 25th. The 24th is a Friday, and for you veterans, especially if you're either out there, especially Vietnam veterans, we are going to be doing, we're trying to get at least 60 to 80 out there to do a presentation at the Norco High School, and we'll be discussing with the kids there our veteran, you know, our experience as a veteran and during Vietnam, and also any of the current wars. So we're trying to get as many of the students engaged into far as, so they understand what we went through as veterans and, of course, what they can expect, hopefully, if they ever join the military. The following day, Kevin will have the film festival as part of it. I think he's got two good films situated, along with a panel of veterans, and again, they'll be doing that on Saturday at the high school. One of the things, and if you remember, last year, we did a Vietnam, End of the Vietnam War Day. It's going to coincide with our March 24th and March 25th date. Also, again, mark your calendar, I know it's Easter Sunday, but Jeff Kayhan, one of our members of the executive committee, came up with a good idea to do a sunset service on Easter Sunday, as also George Ingalls Day, this is here in the city. George Ingalls Day has two meanings. It's, when the Veterans Committee was initially put together, they wanted to have that day, and what they call is the Circle of Honor Day is originally what it was coined to be. It's just now just George Ingalls Day. But anybody that has given up the ultimate sacrifice will be honored that day, along with commemorating George Ingalls in his actions in Vietnam where he was killed. So just so you know, it's going to be a Sunset Service Day, and we'll work out the details, but I'll get them to you again. That's going to be April 16th, which is Easter Sunday. I know it's going to be a long day for some of you that go to the sunrise service, and then you can come later and sunset service, and Jeff's yelling at me. 50th anniversary of the George Ingalls Day. All right? Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ted. Bob?
Nothing the past week, but next week I have the Schools Committee and unload at the end of the month.
Any dinners cleaned up or anything like that?
No.
Okay. She did?
I'll be advisory board.
Okay.
You're going to eat now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Start off with RTA, the Riverside Transit Association, is the buses. During the Christmas holidays, they went back to the 25-cent fare for the students. Anybody that had a student card could ride the buses 24/7. Anywhere they wanted to go for 25 cents. And there was almost 16,000 students rode during that time. So it's, they do it the 4th of July, and then this is the first time they've done it over the Christmas holidays, but they said they'd continue it. Also, January 8th was the last day that they used the downtown bus terminal in Riverside. They're now transferring passengers at intersections where the bus stations are. They're still trying to work out, helping everybody get used to the schedules where they can stop at a, get off at an intersection and walk right over and get on another bus going to their destination because of the downtown bus terminal, there was too much traffic in there, and because Greyhound used it and everything else. But also, it was kind of a draw for a lot of undesirable characters in there that hung out there all the time. It was a kind of a, well, expense for the police department, there's always having to go down there and everything. And I know I rode the bus from Arupa over there three or four times to meetings there at the county building, and I didn't know whether I wanted to get off the bus there or not. But anyway, they no longer use it, and I think Greyhound's moved out, or going to move out there, trying to move, I think, to Arupa Valley. Also, RCTC, we have a workshop, our annual workshop, a week from tomorrow and Friday out in Palm Springs, and there's always a lot of information we get coming back from there about transportation, new transportation bills, and proposed gas taxes and stuff like that. And then Vector, tomorrow's our meeting for Vector, so I don't have anything to report on it. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Berwin. At the beginning of the month, I attended, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I was just going to, I thought you were done. I just wanted, because Robin was so quiet about it, she forgot to mention that on Saturday, February 4th, is the FFA dinner, and so it's their big fundraiser. She doesn't even tell, she doesn't even speak up about her big event, so.
Would you like to?
Sorry, Mayor.
Say anything else about that, Robin?
No.
Okay. All right. So beginning of the month of January, I attended the Chino Basin Desalter Authority, our board meeting, monthly board meeting. It was a pretty busy meeting, and I'll just try to be very brief with it. It was a pretty busy meeting, and I'll just try to be very brief with it. On our project summary, we have, this is all on the CDA Phase III Expansion. We've so far completed 10 projects. We have five projects in construction and startup, and our most favorite project is now in design, and that is the Santa Ana River Crossing water line. So slowly moving forward. And right now, we're looking at a total project of all these projects in construction of a total cost of $149 million. And that's all I have to report on Board Meetings. So we'll move to item number two, Consent Calendar. Do any members wish to pull any items?
Mr. Mayor, we pull A and F.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the rest.
Councilmembers Bash, Grunmeyer, Hannah, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 2A, Ted?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmembers, a reference, the minutes, I would like to request that on item 8A in our minutes, because it's a continual hearing, that we can continue those minutes into this meeting if it's possible through the city, for the city clerk, if that's a feasible project, so that if someone was to see this, it's all on one date, rather than jumping through the two dates because it's a continual hearing.
Sure, I can include that in tonight's minutes.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Want to make a motion to?
Councilmembers Bash, Grunmeyer, Hannah, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 2F, Ted?
Yeah, this is the sound, and for most of you that don't know, Councilman Berwin, Hannah, and I are on the Master Plan Committee for Ingalls Park, and this is something that we have requested a long time ago to finally get sound up into Clark Arena. And there has been some talk of why are we putting in sound when we need to fix the sound in Marino. That's also on our target thing to do, so, but currently, just so the rest of the council members know, that there is no sound system at all in Clark Arena, and there's been several clubs that have requested the sound. We bring portable units up there all the time. For those who don't know, I probably spend half my life up there in Ingalls, up at the park. But it needs it, and every club that's up there needs it. So it is a very serious situation, and helps out renting the facility if we get that sound system in there. When I looked at the sound and going through it with staff and what we needed up there, I looked at this and I see the bids, and there's only two bids. Normally, I would be objected to having just two bids if we had a problem, but after talking to staff and after reviewing the qualifications of this person, I feel very confident that this is a good bid. And I understand there's some issues, but I think we have made a good decision, and I wanted to thank Mr. Petrie and his staff for doing an excellent job of going out and getting that. But again, I, so I'm moved to approve it now.
Councilmembers Bash, Grunmeyer, Hannah, Mayor Protem Newton, or Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Called much worse. Move to item four, Public Comments. Clerk, have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, Pamela Bell.
Hi, Mayor, City Council, and community members. I'm Pamela Bell of Bell Farms in Norco, Vice President of the Local Citywide Equine Sports Enthusiast Hall of Fame. And with me tonight, we have Terry, Joanne, and Denise, also Board Members for that group. We continue to acknowledge the equine riders and trainers that reach the level of national and world champion. A few I see in this room, nice to see you, and they represent Norco across the U.S. at the highest level of competition, bringing the Norco name with them. I want to thank you first for allowing us to hang our awards here at City Hall, so if you have not seen them, they're down the hall and to the right, you can see the recognitions we've given. To continue this effort, we'd like to invite you and your friends to join us February 11th. Of course, go to the February 4th event first, and then come over for February 11th and at Stacy Turner's Stables for our Sweetheart Dance fundraiser. Tickets are $20, and they include live music, DJ, silent auction, cash bar, and salsa bar. It is an adult-only event, so please, keep the kiddies at home, but bring your sweetheart and come have a great time with us. Tickets are available through Facebook, which is Horstown USA Hall of Fame, or our website, horstownhof.com. All right? I will leave some postcards at the back, and again, we hope to see you there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pam. Or, anyone can call Joanne for tickets?
Yeah.
And Terry? Okay.
Bob Frochizer?
Hi, Bob. Let me remind you to keep it at three minutes.
Oh, yeah, I will. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to talk about the Corona Avenue Storm Drain Project. As a few new members, so as most of you know, I was told since 2010, this is going in. Public Works, Councilman, and previous city manager was out, we have to do something. Nothing's done, year after year after year, nothing's done. Bob, you're next on the list, next on the list, next on the list. Nothing gets done again. Other streets are done. And then if I ask questions, I was told by staff to, don't talk to certain people about it. So, fast forward now that it's in, it works, thank you. So I turned in a claim for my house and my pool, that you, most of you've seen the photographs of the damage. I'm told it took too long. So I called the city's insurance company representative, explained why I waited. I thought, why do this year after year after year, waiting if and when the drain goes in? Do it one time only, because I'll call the city. So we called the city, they talked, called me back, said, no, the city's going to hold tight. No. So my feeling, I was lied to, harassed, the city procrastinated for six years, and when I turned in a claim, I'm told it took too long. Not a very good way to treat a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Bonnie Slager?
Hi. Three things. First of all, Town Hall Meeting is coming Monday, and the agenda is out in the hallway there, thanks to Cheryl. So Greg is up front on the agenda, so I hope that everybody in the audience can be there. I know you folks will be, but I hope the audience will be there. Tomorrow night is our Norco Horsemen's Meeting, and our monthly meeting, and Cassie Sanders-Holly, did I get it the right way? I tend to put it backwards. Is going to be our speaker from leaps and bounds, so I hope you will join us. And finally, this coming March 11th is our Casino Night, which is our fundraiser for scholarships for the high school students, for the FFA's high school students, so I hope you will all put on your calendar now, March 11th, for the Casino Night. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Kathy Azavito?
Hi, Kathy.
Hi, everyone. This is so funny to be on this side. I'm here with my Silver Lakes hat on. Most of you know that I'm the Equestrian Coordinator, and so I just wanted to share with you a few little things that's going on. I wanted to let you know that the show that I've been telling you all about on the 21st, due to the weather, we changed it to the 28th. So I hope you guys all got your little passes to come as VIPs, and hope you'll come see us on the 28th for our Ranch Riding Challenge. And then I really wanted to talk a little more about February 25th, which is the Silver Lakes Experience, we're calling it. And those of you who've been out know that there's five arenas at Silver Lakes, so what we're going to do is we're going to have a fabulous brunch, and then we're going to open the arenas from 9:00 until 4:30 in the afternoon that day. And one of the larger arenas will be a walk-trot arena, the other arena will be a open canner, if you want, and then the other three arenas are going to be set up just for fun. We're going to put a dressage court, we're going to put ranch riding, a logs, a gate, and then we're also going to put in, because I can't stand not to have some barrels and some poles. So you'll have any discipline, you know, as many horse shows as I have, I just can't get all the Norco residents there until I do something like this. So I really hope that you'll help me spread the word. I hope you'll all come. I've got flyers for that event. I'll set out in the back. And then I also wanted to let you know, on that very same day, we're going to be hosting the PRC Mounted Posse Queen Orientation. And I just wanted to share with you how fabulous it's, we've been working together, Silver Lakes and the city. Just to give you an example, for the PRC Mounted Posse Queen Competition, Thursday night, they'll be up at Nellie Weaver Hall, practicing their speeches and getting together with all the final preparations. Friday night, the barbecue will be at Silver Lakes, back in the backyard. Saturday, the Equestrian Competition will be also at Silver Lakes, and then the coronation will be back at Nellie Weaver Hall at the City of Norco. So the Norco took two days, and Silver Lakes took two days, and so that's how we're going to move ahead with that. Also, I just wanted to let you know quickly, we've got a Ranch Riding Series, March, April, and May. We have two reigning shows in March and June. And then quickly, on other portions of Silver Lakes, if you've been by there, you'll see the restaurant is coming up. Hope to have that done in spring. You'll see the big pillars coming up. They'll also have banquet facilities, so that's something for the City of Norco to be able to take advantage of. And in this world of soccer, we, just this last few weeks, we've contacted the Norco College, and I found out that the girls' soccer coach at Norco High is, was a friend of Stacy's, he's a Norco High grad, and we're going to be hosting, we're going to be hosting through that bell, it frustrates me, we're going to be hosting tournaments for the college and the high school out at Silver Lakes, so we're going to work with the schools, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
That concludes Public Comments.
Item 5A is a second reading. This is ordinance number 1012. And all is required on this is a motion and a second. No further evidence will be taken.
Councilmembers Bash, Grunmeyer, Hannah, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 6A, this is a report on fiscal year 2016, our audited financial reports. Gina?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the City Council. The city's independent auditors, White, Nielsen, Dill-Evans, have completed the year-end annual independent audit of city funds and accounts for fiscal year 1516. The city's annual financial reports were prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and comply with other rules and regulations applicable to government entities. Bob Callanan, CPA and partner at White, Nielsen, Dill-Evans, is here to provide a summary associated with the fiscal year 1516 audit processes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name's Bob Callanan. Again, White, Nielsen, Dill-Evans, I was the engagement partner on the audit of the city's financial statements for the fiscal year June 30th, 2016, and 17, and I'm getting 16 and 17 messed up, but I'm writing it correctly this time. So, have a little presentation to go, if I'm pointing this in the right direction.
On? Let's see, it might not be on.
Oh, yeah. Think I had this problem last year, too. Oh, here, on. I can go along, the visual might be a little better, but it's mostly word, I have no nice graphics or anything on there, but just wanted to outline, go over the scope of services that we provided to the city, what our audit opinions and reports stated and reported. I have some required communications under the auditing standards that I have to disclose to you, and then just give you a brief update on what the new accounting standards are for governmental entities in the next couple of years. Go to the next slide. Oh, you're already there? All right. So basically, we did the audit of the city's financial statements. It's a series of opinions on the city's major funds and on a government-wide basis, and we did that audit in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards, accounting standards, as well as government auditing standards. We also were contracted to do a agreed-upon procedures review of the city's GAN appropriation limit. And finally, we are also engaged to do a single audit of the city's federal grant programs if necessary. And the if necessary has to do with a annual threshold, and if the city had federal grants in excess of $750,000, then a single audit is required. But for fiscal year June 30, 16, the city was below that threshold, and therefore, the requirement for a single audit was not needed. Want to point out that the financial statements are, the management is responsible for the financial statements and the fair presentation of the information in them, and our responsibility is to express an opinion on those financial statements. The standards require that we plan and perform the audit in accordance with the standards, and mainly to make sure that the financial statements are free of any material misstatements. Now to our audit opinion, you know, the audit evidence, we believe is sufficient and appropriate to provide our opinion, and we did provide unmodified opinions on your city's financial statements. Those unmodified opinions, that's the highest form of opinion that we can provide. A lot of people call it a clean opinion, but that's what that stands. We did have what I call an emphasis, a matter paragraph, just explaining that we had some prior period adjustments that had to be recorded to the beginning fund balances, and those are detailed there. We had some accrued interest receivable that wasn't recognized in previous years. We had some deposit liabilities that had already been satisfied, so that revenue was recognized in the city's general fund. We had a Calhoun Grant Fund that was classified last year with the Successor Agency Fund, and after management determined that there were not tax increment funds involved in those loans, we moved it appropriately to the city side of the ledger, so to speak, and then a correction of the Landscape and Maintenance District charges that were brought to light last year. Our other report that we do is, we do an audit of the city's financial statements. We're not auditing the city's internal controls, but I do have to gain an understanding of those internal controls and compliance in regards to the city audit, so I know what to look for, look where the risks are, and things of that nature. So in doing that, we are required to issue a report of maybe what we came across, even though I'm not, you know, doing an internal control audit, if I come across some, I need to let council know and management know what those issues might be, so that they can be corrected and move forward. So with that, I'm pleased to report that we did not come across any material weaknesses during our audit that related to internal control. We had one significant deficiency related to that accrued interest that I had spoken about earlier, and we noted no material non-compliance. So, not saying there is non-compliance, but based on our procedures that we performed, which is not 100% or totality, otherwise, I'd have a nice million-dollar bill for you, nothing came to our attention that concerned us of any nature. Now into the letter about required communications is just basically to say that we provided a plan, our scope and plan timing early in the audit process through the form of our engagement letter and a planning letter. Again, management is responsible for the significant accounting policies that are driving the basis for the financial statements, and those significant accounting policies are in footnote one of the city's financial statements. Want to point out that this year, there was a new GASB standard implemented. It was GASB Statement 72 regarding fair value measurements. That did not have a material effect on the financial statements of the city, but if you want to look at the changes, it added three foot, three pages of footnote disclosures to your Cash and Investments section. As relates to the other accounting policies that the city has in place, part of our job is the audit is to make sure that those policies are being abided by, as well as being consistently applied from year to year, and we found that to be hold true for the year ended June 30th, 2016. Want to point out, your financial statements contain estimates, and so some of the significant estimates that you have in your financial statements is there. estimates that you have in your financial statements is there. They have to do with the fair value of investments. Obviously, you haven't sold the investment yet, and we're doing a point in time, so there's fair value estimates. There's estimates of the useful lives of the capital assets and depreciation of those assets that are reflected in your financial statements. There's the annual required contribution, the pension expense, and the related deferred inflows and outflows related to pension reporting that are all based on the Calpers defined benefit pension plan information. And then finally, you have another post-employment benefit plan that also has actuarial information or estimates of what future contributions and potential liability is related to those. The most sensitive disclosures that affect your financial statements, I would point you to note five to get more information about the defined benefit plan. Note 12, related to the other post-employment benefit plan. Note 13, related, the latest activity related to the successor agency private purpose trust fund that is trying to unwind or close down the former redevelopment agency. And then lastly, again, just some discussion on the restatements and what the individual issues were there. The point on the bottom, but go back to the one slide, I don't want to miss. Good opportunities to say that we had no difficulties in performing our audit. That's an important thing to point out to you. Okay, you may go to the next there, thanks. I'm also obligated to tell you about corrected and uncorrected misstatements. We had no uncorrected misstatements. Those are what we call waived adjustments that usually are immaterial, but there were none to discuss. We had no material audit adjustments, so that was good. We did have a few adjustments. Management agreed to record those, but they were not deemed material. We had no disagreements with management on any issues. Management provided us with a representation letter explaining that they gave us unfettered access to anything we needed to get our job done in auditing the financial statements. And to our knowledge, I'm also supposed to point out, if there's any consultations or opinion shopping, if they don't like what I have to say, I'm required to report to you if that's the case, and in this instance, there were no such instances. And then lastly, just wanted to point out some of the upcoming GASB standards, the primary one, you know, next year, fiscal year 1617, we have, you know, quite a few there, six. A lot of them are just clarifications on the GASB pension standards that happened two years ago. They're trying to clean up some of the loopholes that were in there, essentially. We do have a tax abatement disclosure that's going to have to go into place, and then some if, some things related to the external investment pools, such as LEAF, there's going to be some additional disclosures and some possible changes in valuation of those assets. And then the blending requirement for component units really won't apply to your city, and the pensions issue is, again, some more cleanup language in '82. The big one coming up is in two years is GASB Statement 75 having to do with the other post-employment benefit liability. That's going to be put on to the face of the government-wide financial statements, similar to what happened last year with the pension liabilities. So right now, the information on the liability is just in a note disclosure format. It will now be on the face of the financial statements, starting with fiscal year 1718. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions related to the audit process, I would be happy to entertain those.
Does council have any questions for our auditor or our financial director? Evan?
Yes.
Ted?
No.
Robin?
No.
Berwin?
Andy?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And thank you, Gina. Okay, next is item 6B, and just to make-
Mayor, I apologize, I need a motion to receive-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Council members Bash?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Cheryl. This is item 6B, and just as a note, this is a successor agency item. On this item, council will be referred to as chair, vice chair, and board members, and city manager will be referred to as executive director.
Okay.
Executive director.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and board members. This is a request for you to approve Successor Agency Resolution Number 2017-1, approving the purchase and sale agreement between the successor agency to the Norco Community Redevelopment Agency and Ashraf Raj Pot. This particular item applies to APN Number 127-070-023 and APN Number 127-070-026. And this is applicable to a successor agency-owned parcel, which is approximately .4 acre area. This particular parcel is located at the intersection of Hamner Avenue and Hidden Valley, right behind the Shell Gas Station. The property was acquired in 2001 by the former Norco Community Redevelopment Agency. The purpose of acquiring this particular parcel at the time was to encourage the development of adjacent parcels in the gateway specific plan. As you recall, the Norco Community Redevelopment Agency was dissolved in 2012 pursuant to the provisions of Assembly Bill 1484 and Assembly Bill ABX 126. And following the dissolution of the agency, the city was required to prepare a long-range property management plan. That plan was to outline the parcels that are owned by the agency and the methods by which those parcels would be sold off. The city did go through that process, prepared a long-range property management plan, and the city's plan was approved by the Department of Finance on February 6 of 2015. Following the approval of that long-range property management plan, the city council authorized us to retain Cosmon Realty Corporation to assist us with respect to the disposition of the properties that were owned by the successor agency. And since that approval, Cosmon has embarked on a series of efforts to try to market these properties and to get the properties sold. And they have done that through advertisement on their website, outreach to adjacent property owners, as well as listing on multiple real estate sites. Recently, this particular property, we received an offer to sell it. Initially, the offer was for $92,000. Following additional negotiation with the proposed buyer, that offer was raised to $110,000. The property itself was purchased by the agency in 2001 at the cost of $65,000. Again, with all the efforts that have been made by Cosmon Realty to market this property, there hasn't been much interest in folks trying to buy this property. The reason for that is a small piece, and the piece is, has some challenges, specifically that are, by itself is not, there's not much that you can do with it, and there is some power lines running across that property. I believe the potential buyer anticipates that they will constantly add some additional parcel in the area and ultimately use it to do improvements, bring development to the city of Norco. I just want to mention the fact that the proceeds from the sale of this parcel, because this is a successor agency-owned parcel, the monies will be transferred to the current auditor controller for distribution to the affected taxing entities. And with that also, I do like to acknowledge that Brian Moncrief from Cosmon Realty, who has been the broker that has assisted the city in the marketing, and through this point is here, and he and staff will be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Andy, do any of the board members have any questions of the realtor or the executive director? Kevin?
Kevin.
Ted?
No.
Robin?
No.
Berwin?
Oh.
Okay. Then would someone like to make a recommendation?
Cards.
Would you like me to read out the complete recommendation?
Yes, please. So, the motion being by board member Bash and seconded by board member Hannah. Okay, board members Bash?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hoffman?
Yes.
Chair Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Cheryl. Going back to city council hats now, this will be item 6C. Andy, city manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is a request for you to adopt Resolution Number 2017-1 on the city side, approving purchase and sale agreement between the city of Norco and Newcastle Partners, Inc. This property pertains to a 3.31 acre vacant real property parcel that is located in the city of East Val, APN Number 156-030-002. Again, the city acquired this property in 1997. It is 3.31 acres of vacant real property in 19-
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven. That's right. That's when it was acquired. This piece of land is located at the intersection of I-15 and 60 freeways, again, in the city of East Val, what used to be Mary Loma. This property was acquired from the state of California, specifically Caltrans, through a director's deed, subject to Southern California Edison easement that is on the property. The purpose of the acquisition of the property back in 1977 was to use it for water production purposes. The subject property has, however, has not been used for water production or distribution purposes since it was acquired in 1977. And consequently, this property has remained vacant. In 2007, the city council determined and declared this property sublos and authorized staff to sell the property utilizing the services of a professional real estate firm. The city did engage, again, Cosmon Realty Corporation to help us with the marketing efforts in an attempt to sell this property. Actually, the first attempt was back in 2007, and those efforts did not yield any results. The primary reason for that is, again, this property is subject to Southern California Edison easement. In addition, the property is landlocked, meaning that there is no access, independent access to this property, except by going through adjacent properties. In addition to helping us market this property, Cosmon was also engaged to help us comply with Government Code 542-20-54232. The purpose of this particular section of the government code requires that before public agencies can sell land of this type, they are required to first offer that piece of land to public agencies within the area, to determine if there is a need for those public agencies to use a property for low-to-moderate-income housing purposes or for park purposes. Cosmon did help us go through that process, and none of the public agencies around the area were interested in this property. Again, recently, we did get an offer from Newcastle Partners, subject to the conditions that have been identified in the purchase and sale agreement. The initial offer to purchase this property was for $475,000, and then following subsequent negotiations, they increased that offer to $550,000 and agreed to pay their buyer's fee. With that, we believe is a reasonable offer, and we are recommending that the city council authorize the resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement pertaining to this specific property. Again, the proceeds from the sale of this particular property will go into the city's special asset revenue fund. With that, again, Brian Moncrief is in the audience, and he can assess with any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Andy. Any council members have questions of the realtor or city manager? Berwin?
No.
Robin?
No.
Ted?
Kevin?
Entertain a motion to adopt, no cards, Cheryl.
Council members Bash?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item D is Proposed Annual Evaluation Process for City Manager and City Attorney. City clerk?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. At the request of Councilmember Grunmeyer late last year, the city council directed staff to develop a process of conducting annual performance evaluations of the city manager and the city attorney. The process for evaluating the city manager and the city attorney is intended to increase accountability by ensuring that their job performance is evaluated at least annually. The evaluation process is important and healthy for effective working relationships. It reinforces and recognizes job performance results that exceed pre-established targets and expectations. Performance evaluations enable the creation of reasonable performance standards so that the city council, the city manager, and the city attorney are aware of work that is considered acceptable performance. Ultimately, the evaluations of the city manager and the city attorney are essential tools for promoting more effective decision-making throughout the city organization. And so this annual performance evaluation process will allow for open communication. It will establish mutual goals for progress, identify actions that can be taken to enhance development and performance. It'll allow for the evaluation of results based on performance standards and previously established goals. And it will also provide balanced feedback and identify areas where improvements may be needed. The frequency of evaluations, this proposed policy allows for the evaluation process to take place at least annually. The city council shall convene in closed session at a regular meeting within 30 days prior to the month and date of hire. And performance evaluations may be conducted outside of this timeframe if determined necessary by the city council, the city manager, or the city attorney. The procedure for the evaluations begins with the city council receiving an evaluation form to complete, and in your staff report, Exhibit A is the city manager's performance evaluation form. Exhibit B is the city attorney's rating sheet. And so the city council would complete those evaluation forms. Likewise, the city manager and the city attorney will complete the evaluations as well as a self-assessment. And this comparison of the self-assessment will provide an opportunity for insight comparing the city council's evaluation and the self-assessment. After the evaluations are completed, filled out, the city council meet in closed session to discuss the city manager and/or city attorney's performance and to assimilate the individual council evaluations. The city council will then include the city manager or the city attorney in that process in the session. At the conclusion, the city council may then direct the evaluation and any subsequent actions be placed in the city manager's employment file or the city attorney's contract file. And so the recommendation is for the city council to adopt Resolution Number 2017-02, approving the process of conducting annual performance evaluations of the city manager and city attorney. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Cheryl. Robin? Any comments, questions?
Thank you to staff for putting this together. I appreciate the efforts that were made. The reason why I brought this forward is I personally felt there needed to be some consistency to which the evaluations were done and standardized form to provide feedback. If the employee and the employers are all on the same page as far as what the goals are and what we're trying to achieve, we can be far more effective that way. And really, I know a lot of us probably think of evaluations as kind of a negative- And really, I know a lot of us probably think of evaluations as kind of a negative thing, but when they're regularly scheduled and something that's collaborated on, it actually becomes a very good tool for the organization to grow and become stronger. And so, I think this is going to be a huge benefit to the council and to our City Attorney and our City Manager. So, thank you for working on this.
Berwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'll agree with Robin on that, and the staff did a good job on this. And I really liked the questionnaire part of it, that where we actually go through there and grade, give them a grade on what their performance is, I think, and just make it real good for everybody. So, once again, thank you.
Yeah, I think this is a good start. As someone who actually used to have to do annual evaluation reports on his employees, it is a tool for, not only for the employer, but also the employee to see where they are in the process. So, I'm glad we're trying to take something that's consistent rather than just like we did in the past. So, I think this is a good start. Thank you.
Kevin?
Well, I agree with all of you. I think it's a great start. Thank you, staff. Good job.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-02.
Council Members Bash? Grundmeyer? Hannah? Mayor Protem Hoffman? Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Item 7A, we're now going to public hearings. This is a ordinance number 1013, first reading. And will this be you, John?
Yeah. This has to do with, for the audience members, has to do with the prosecution of abuse and neglect of animals. Neglect and abuse of animals is currently a violation of state law, and the process for impounding animals, generally in our case, horses, is set forth in state law. And the code sections are prosecuted by the district attorney. The city really plays no role other than providing the district attorney with a case that he can prosecute, but ultimately, it's up to his prosecutorial discretion. So, the district attorney decides they don't want to prosecute if they don't have to, and the city incurs, obviously, costs up to that point, for example, impound costs for horses. And it's also discretionary with the district attorney whether or not he will pursue the reimbursement of those costs. And surprisingly, in a city like Norco, abuse and neglect of animals is not a violation of the city's municipal code, never has been. And so, it seems that when we...this issue arose in a horse impoundment, recent horse impoundment case, where the city didn't have the ability to independently prosecute. This will allow the city to prosecute animal abuse and neglect as a civil matter and pursue reimbursement of its own costs. It'll allow us to obtain things like abatement warrants and... basically injunctions requiring that, with a judge's direction, that animals be treated in a particular way, and abuse and neglect be remedied in a particular way, and the city will have control rather than the district attorney. It's just, it's an additional tool that I think is appropriate for the city. Any questions? Have to answer.
Does Council have any questions of staff?
Can I do a mission here? This doesn't...this stays right along the line of the criminal prosecution, right, that we have now currently under 597?
Yeah, although, yes, although the city doesn't prosecute that.
No, the county does.
The DA will continue to do whatever the DA deems is appropriate in prosecution. We just have the right, under this code section, to proceed civilly if it is appropriate in a specific case.
Okay, so this is more civil?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Kevin?
I think this is excellent. Long time coming, and something I know that we've been looking at for a while, and I really appreciate it. I thought it was well-written, and thank you.
Robin? Berwin?
Yeah, I think that it's about time we got something like this, because I know the cases that John's referring to about confiscating those animals and the big expense the city had, and what a time it goes through to get reimbursed. But that's not the first case. There've been several of them through the years that I've went out and helped them bring those in, and then they get thrown out of court or something. The city didn't have a leg to stand on, so I think this is a good deal, as far as it'll help us get reimbursed. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And Cheryl, do we have any cards?
No cards on this item.
Okay. Anyone wishing to comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council discussion. And action, the recommended action is adopt ordinance number 1013 for the first reading.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco, adding Norco Municipal Code, Chapter 8.06, neglect and abuse of animals.
Council Members Bash? Hannah? Grundmeyer? Mayor Protem Hoffman? Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next is number eight. This is a continued appeal hearing. This item was...the public hearing is still open on this, and by Council, or Mayor Protem's recommendation that we request that the minutes from December 21st be included with this. And Berwin, I'm going to ask you, kind of, on this decision, if you want to skip or allow any questions, because since you had to leave?
Now, remember, though, that the minutes reflect what the public hearing up to that point, up to the point in time, so that every council member was a part of the public hearing, which got continued.
But I just wanted to double-check that with Berwin. So, Steve, if you want to pick up your report from that point? Or anything? Then we would just leave it as complete?
And we're in the public hearing phase.
Okay. So then, then I can move into the public hearing portion? You didn't have any other?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so what I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and then now open the appeal hearing. And I would like all the speakers, if there are any, to try to keep your comments right around three minutes. So let me go ahead and open the appeal hearing, and I'll first ask for any comments by the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmen, members. First off, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in this town. Some of you know, I've been here since elementary school through college. This is part of, this is my town. I understand that this town is animal-keeping. I'm animal-keeping. You know, while I was in high school, I raised animals, sold at the fair. I worked at a dairy equipment business. After high school, I was a member of the Citizens Patrol in this city. After going from there, I'm now a police officer in Corona, and in my department there, I was on our mountain team there, on the mountain patrol. At the time, I wasn't living in Norco, and it was hard to board your horse off property and have the time to train it when you're not around it every day. And so, I resigned my position from there, and now I've moved back to town. I was able to purchase the home I grew up in from my family. And I'm planning on trying to get back on our mountain team again soon, as soon as there's an opening. Now that I'm back in Norco and I was able to purchase my family home, I want to make the home mine. And, you know, since I was a little kid, I wanted to put a shop in my backyard that I could have a place to enjoy and work on the things I like to do, and that's what I've applied for here. As you can see in the photos, I have a large RV, a large trailer, and that's part of what I want to park inside the building, along with...I inherited my great-grandfather's tractor that me and my father restored when I was a little kid, and now I've inherited my grandfather's tractor that needs to be restored, and that's another thing I plan on working on inside this building if it's approved. I also have my first car from high school. It's a classic car that I want to park inside the building and protect it, and over half of the building is going to be used solely for parking of these items. My house, it's a two-story residential tract home, surrounded on all sides by a block wall. It's good, where I want to put this building is going to be mostly obscured from view from the street, because the houses are taller than what the building's going to be. I have my required 2,880 square feet of animal-keeping area on my site plan. In addition to that, I plan on using the 1,000 square feet that's south of the building to use for animal-keeping. My entire lot, it's flat with the exception of the front yard. When the city calculated my total lot coverage due to the slope in my front yard, which is fully developed with my driveway where I parked my truck, they calculated the lot coverage at 31%. Currently, the rule's 40% of allowance in the city. Based on my numbers of not counting, discounting the slope in my front yard, I'm at 23%. An identical-sized building was approved last year, three houses east of me at 2460 Crazy Horse Lane. It's the same model tract home, a similar-sized lot, same-sized building. Three houses south of me at 2553 Broken Lance, there's another identical, or another identical tract home, similar lot with a large building on it. Most of the homes around my house and neighborhood have large buildings. Like I said, most of our houses are all surrounded by block walls. Houses are taller than the buildings. I worked with the city staff. I resubmitted my plans several times, and to make sure I met all the qualifications that the city wanted, I moved the building from where I originally wanted. I shrunk it in size, shrunk the door sizes, made sure I didn't have to drive across the animal-keeping area. I submitted three or four different plans before I finally got to the final revision, and then I went to the Planning Commission and got a unanimous decision that, yes, it was to approve the building. Mr. Hoffman brought up a couple things I'd like to address from the last meeting when he was going over questions with it. He commented if my drawing was to scale. My drawing is to scale. That was one of the things that I went over with city staff and made sure that it was to scale. He questioned some of the measurements. I used a certified laser and along with satellite imagery to make sure that my lot was to scale and the measurements were correct. He questioned the block wall, if it was on my side of the property, or if it was split down the middle or on the neighbor's property. My father was the original homeowner of that home when it was first built, and he worked with all the neighbors, and the block walls are on all the neighbors' side, so my property line goes to the, all the way to the wall, and then the wall's actually on their property line. He did that because at the time, he worked for a building blocks supply company, and he was able to get everybody to get a deal on it, so they worked with him and let him have the extra six inches all the way around the property line. It was also brought up that it was believed that my door openings were greater than 40% of the face of the building, which it's not, it's 35%. You know, and like I said, I got a unanimous decision in November that it was to be allowed. I didn't have a single neighbor that filed a complaint, or wrote a letter, or appeared to any meeting contesting the building. I actually had neighbors that spoke in support of it. Questions were addressed about the drainage of the building. I do have drains in my backyard, and if drainage becomes a problem, once the proposed building, if allowed, is built, I will extend those drains and make sure that any lot drainage is taken care of. You know, if this building's approved, and once the building's up, my plan's to start getting animals on my property. I just don't want to have to move animals around while I'm having construction go on in my backyard. You know, I plan on supporting Norco and buying animals at the fair, and, you know, I participate in events with the city at Horse Week and at the fair, and I just, it's been a dream of mine to have a shop since I was a little kid, and I'm just asking you to not crush my dream. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for...
You will get that opportunity in a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Right now, I'd like to, Cheryl, do we have any cards?
Yes, we do.
From the other speakers? And I'd like to remind any of the additional speakers, the applicant is always allowed a little more time, but speakers are allowed three minutes. Thank you.
David Dobson.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is David Dobson. I live in Norco. I own several horses myself, as well as very many animals. I'm also a part of the mounted unit for the Corona Police Department, along with Scott Coke, formerly Scott Coke. The...I came to the Planning Commission on 11/9/16. This building was voted on unanimously, only to be overruled, objected. I'm not sure how that exactly worked, which led us here today. The question we had is why? Knowing Scott, knowing what he's done in the community from the lawnmower races at the Norco Fair, he was the really big guy in the jumpsuit out there racing. You know, he's crowded in his garage, building all this stuff. He builds a lot of stuff for me, for other people. I know he does appreciate the land use. I know what he's gone through to get this approved. The other thing, I know Mr. Hoffman brought this to the objection, brought the objection on the 10th day of the appeals. Is that, did he abstain from the vote on this? Is that a conflict of interest? Why was this brought up is the only question we had. After going to a Planning Commission meeting and listening to him and having him vote 5-0, that seemed like, okay, it's approved. So, as a longtime member of Norco, Sebber Reynolds, myself, have an outbuilding myself, have other stuff, it just kind of, kind of brought it up, and that's why I came to speak tonight. So, I'm sure you guys will address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Johnson.
Mayor, councilors, good evening.
Evening.
I began attending these meetings with my friend Scott Coke in order to see what it would be like to go through getting a barn and stable built to my own property in the near future. I was able to attend the Planning Commission meeting last year when Mr. Coke's plans and CUP were approved. I later discovered that a City Councilman denied the permit on the 10-day deadline, which is the midnight hour, and then attended the City Council meeting on December 21st. And please understand that I'm neither for nor against these metal buildings. What this city has done is set up a process for residents to get metal buildings approved for their private property. This turned to be the conditional use permit process, otherwise under the CUP. I hear residents making adjustments to their plans to meet the restrictions and guidelines for these plans, but then, when they do this, they get other obstacles thrown in their way. Case in point, last month, I watched Councilman Hoffman stare at the plans and ask the Planning Director, Mr. King, did we actually walk this property and ensure that the measurements are correct? He wanted to say, "We have 102-foot width, and there's a six-inch block wall, so that attracts three inches from the animal-keeping area." And he continued, "I know this sounds petty," which it is, "his AKAs barely making the minimum." Then the Planning Director, Mr. King, responded that the CUP process was not the way to go. The CUP is generally for commercial purposes, not accessory buildings. There's a disconnect here. Then Councilman Bash then looked at the plans and commented also, and I believe this is his personal opinion, that these buildings are devaluing every property around them. And while looking at Mr. Coke's plans, Councilman Bash also said, "It's not to scale," when the Planning Director ensured that they were. In addition, Councilman Bash referred to citizens who want to build these buildings as not caring about the city. From the beginning, what should have been actually done was to place a temporary moratorium on these buildings until the city itself understood what they needed from these applications and the applicants. Instead, the city set up a very complicated CUP process and a very costly process, because we all know that the CUP with impact studies is very complex and costly for the average resident who just wants to be at a building permit approved. However, I believe that throwing a wrench into these building permit applications was the intended goal with the introduction of the CUP. And Councilman Bash, he actually said, he said it well back in the 21st when he referred to the CUP process for these accessory buildings, permits by saying, quote, "And we were guaranteed that the CUP would be the way we stop this," unquote. You make it appear that there is a process to get these buildings approved, but there really isn't one. It's obvious that the real disconnect here is between the two City Council members who are personally against these buildings and the Planning Commission itself. So what you have done is a disservice to some of your own citizens by moving the goalposts every step of the way on these applications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny Leach.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dan Leach, 3300 Chrisview Drive. I'd like to say that in Scott's neighborhood, I just looked at two houses for sale. One sold for $729,000 with a building about 1,000 square foot. sold for $729,000 with a building about 1,000 square foot. I looked at a house this week for $600,000, same exact house, and larger pool, nice amenities. There is value in putting a building on your property. I don't think it affects the neighbors if it's put in the proper spot. He's met the qualifications for that property, and I think they should approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Murphy Banks.
Good evening.
Good evening. I've lived in Norco for quite a few years. I moved here when I was seven, and I called the city in order to see what the regulations were on building a building when I decided to buy my house here. And they told me what it was. I now have heard that the qualifications have gone down, and that you guys are limiting the size of the building that's being put there. I also have horses. Not until two years ago did I have horses. I love them, but my wife has grown up in Norco as well, and she has had horses all her life. I am not trying to take away from the animal keeping area, I'm trying to work with the city, but I'm also trying to get future plans of mine for me to be able to have a building. I believe that he should have everything approved as long as everything passed from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad Polley.
Hi, I moved to Norco in 2016, had a house in Riverside, had RV parking. I also, before moving to Norco, my wife was born and raised in Norco, we have a lot of friends and family, we do a lot of community service. I went to Alma and the Building Committee before I even looked at houses, got all the requirements of a metal building, and then every house I looked at was, over 10 houses, measured every backyard with one of those rolling tape measures, a laser measure. Before I bought my house, I wanted to make sure I had, met all the requirements of aluminum building for my RV, my boat, my truck, for storage. I applied for a building permit back in 2016, met all the requirements, and midway through my application, now I hear about all these new rules that might be implemented, how I might have to change everything. I paid well over $2,000 for an architect to come out to my house, looked at all the building plans, measured my backyard to scale, because I didn't want to do the drawings myself, I wanted to make sure everything was done right. And now midway through, if for some reason I can't get my building, I moved my family to Norco, I moved a lot of my job, everything else, to make these requirements, and I really, and I do live in the same neighborhood as Scott, got the same-sized house, same plan and everything, and I've been, just really think, we need to think about this and make sure we're doing everything right. And me and my neighbors, I know houses in our neighborhood sold for over $1,000, $1,000 more because they had a building, and that was already brought up here. So, buildings add a lot of value to your neighbors, to the comps, and to property tax in Norco. It does draw a revenue for everybody around the city. So I don't think it's a, because you have an aluminum building, I don't think it's going to disgrace the neighborhood, it actually improves the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Louis Coke.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Scott's dad. I originally purchased his house in 1990, and like he said, ever since he was little, we talked about, "Let's put a shop in the backyard." Well, since he's bought the place, he's come up with a big motorhome, and everybody knows motorhomes and RVs have gotten bigger over the years, so you need a big building. And to get everything inside so it's out of sight, it looks clean, you have to have ample room. You know? I mean, you guys are allowing Disney to put metal buildings up. What about the people that live here? You know? That's all we're asking. Make it fair. Make it fair. We met all the requirements. I helped him measure this more than once, because he did it, went to the city, no, don't work. So we go back there and measure it again, three different times, four different times, and they finally said, "Okay, that'll work." Man, right here, told him, "That'll work. We can make that go through." It went through November 9th. Everybody agreed. I think her name's Hedges, the one Planning Commissioner. She was happy to see that she finally seen a deal that showed you didn't have to cross your animal keeping area to get into your garage. You know? Leonard said that as long as you guys allowed Disney to put a metal building up, he could never deny nobody a metal building. So I don't, you know, really, you guys need to think about the people that live here and what the people want. It's a new generation of people in this town now. They have a lot more stuff than the older folks had, okay? I have a little RV, I don't have a big one. These guys now, if you go camping with them, you feel like the Lone Ranger. They all have big buses, they all have big fifth wheels, you know? Everything's different from what we know. And you guys need to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Meisenbach.
I'm just completely confused on this. When you go through, you get the proper requirements, it goes through, gets approved, then it's pulled back, and you really don't get a direction of anything. And personally, what I don't like really seeing is the backyards or the houses that have got all their stuff up. When you've got buildings that look proper and they meet the requirements, the community looks better. And I just am really confused at why, the amount of money that's been paid, and gone back and forth, met every requirement, why you pull it back? And to me, I think these things should be approved. Like everybody else has said, you're meeting the requirements, everybody says it should pass. So I'm a little concerned at what, you know, what the future holds, as far as being able to do this. I see too many properties that have got too much junk outside, too much stuff, you know, and these are people probably still fighting for buildings. You know? I don't, I want to see a community that's a little bit cleaner. And putting stuff in a workshop, I don't want to see engines on the front yard, I don't want to see the stuff. You know, they should be able to put it away, make it look nicer. Property values do go up, they do sell. It brings a lot of value. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
There are no more cards on this item.
Thank you, Cheryl. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the public comments that you've heard? And would the applicant like to step up to the podium? Councilmember Hannah had a question for you.
Question, so we'll turn that on. Got a couple of questions here. I know you're putting it back in the corner there, which is great, you got a straight run down your driveway to it. And you have, on the one side, I guess that would probably be the south side, you have 25-foot of space between the wall and your fence and the wall of your building.
Correct.
And out in front of that, you have the open animal keeping area space. Now, where are you planning on putting your shelter for your animals?
I was planning on, between the building and that 25-foot space is where I was going to put a couple horse corrals, and then I was in the open animal keeping area that's marked, that's where I was going to make my goat pen and chicken coop and that kind of animal area.
Okay, and another concern I have, and that, I guess as your dad brought that up about Mrs. Hedges talking about not driving across the animal keeping area to get to your animals. When you go down your driveway to this building, you'll be able to go into the animal keeping area for the feed delivery, the veterinarian, and the ferrier and all that without having to...
Correct. My gate to my property's on the north side, it's 13-foot wide. With the house overhang, it's about 12-foot wide, and I'm able to currently get a Class A motorhome through that gate. And if you look, that goes the 46-foot, where it's marked 46-foot, that's completely open dirt area right now, and is going to stay that way. That's going to continue to be, it can be used for animal area, but that's my access to the building, but it's also my access to the animal keeping area.
Okay, you're not planning on putting anything in there to block that off?
Not at all, sir.
Because that's a pain to...
Not at all, because if I, even if I wanted to, then it would block the access to the building, which I have no intentions to do, since that's what I want to use it to store my RV in.
Right, right. Okay, that's all the questions I had there, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's start with you. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I do, and I appreciate you bringing back the idea of the 102. I said, when I asked the question, is it because most block walls are going to take up space, but since you clarified that, I won't have to ask you that one. I do have one other question. Under 18.13 of the municipal code, and because I don't see it in your plan, it requires 35 feet from adjoining property for your animal keeping area, where you have it from between your neighbor's house, unless you have a six-foot wall. Is that a six-foot wall that you know of?
It is a six-foot wall all the way around, and from the back of my house to the open animal keeping area is 35-foot, and the neighbor's house is parallel with my house on each side.
I was just asking because it doesn't show the height of the wall.
It's a six-foot wall.
Okay, it's six-foot.
Six-foot block wall all the way around the entire property.
Okay, and that's measured six-foot because, okay, thank you.
Kevin?
And I'll answer some of the things that were directed this way. The 35 feet, do you have windows in front of that? It looks in your drawing, they have windows.
Were you looking at windows?
I'm looking at the front of your building, you have two doors, and then you have, are those windows across?
No, those aren't windows, that's just the outline.
And then what are the measurements of that? Well, you know what my problem is, I'll just be straight up with you. I sat with Alma, and she was confused. You have no measurements on your house, and understand, one of the problems that we've had is we're not following the municipal code. That's part of the reason we're having such trouble here. And just let me finish, and trust me, you're going to have lots of time to talk. This site plan is the plan that's supposed to be carried throughout this entire process. It's supposed to be perfect. And so, three weeks ago, I sat with Alma, she didn't know what the measurements were, and yet she went to this property, and I like her a lot, don't get me wrong. The other part that really bothers me is that the key component to this is 18.45. In 2010, I sat on the council, along with Berwin Hannah, and we covered the accessory buildings. We now granted the new committee is going to come up with larger buildings for motorhomes, but somehow, the approval process went from 14-feet-high, 864, to suddenly, we were supposed to be approving 20-foot-high buildings. That was not following the municipal code, and I'm dead-bang sure about that. Unfortunately, what happened was, and in my opinion, when I look at your application, it should have been stopped at the desk. You should have been required to go back and redo your application. We were told by Alma that what happened is, they didn't feel residents could fill out the application correctly, so what they did was they just sort of tossed that aside and helped, and then we're actually recommending the approval of these buildings. And so many times, commissioners, council thought they had to approve them. My problem is, is we end up with something like this when the municipal code isn't covered. My problem is, is I don't see measurements for your house. I really thought when I sat with Alma that I would see that changed. One of the things that I don't think was reviewed in all of this is the architectural review. If you go to 18.45, and what happens is, is we do 1813 and 1814, which is for an accessory building within the building code. You're asking for a special permit, you're asking for something that's over and above normal zoning. And so 18.45 kicks in. The other thing that kicks in are the architectural review requirements for these buildings. They were never applied to this. And so, I have a problem. While I understand it will improve your property values, I have it on good authority that it will hurt people around them. And the problem I have is that this building may fit right here. It may be great. It doesn't match any of the other houses in the entire area, and I know other people have gotten them, but do people have a right, when they buy into the style neighborhood you're in and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, do they have a right to expect that maybe the building in the back will architecturally fit those other buildings? Isn't that their right? My job is to protect the municipal code, because the municipal code is the only thing that we have, and it's 50 years strong, and unfortunately, from 2010, it was not adjusted except for 18.45. It's the only thing we have to protect the city as a whole. The problem is, there was no impact study done here. This building may well fit in the corner or whatever, but the problem, or it may fit on another property. Part of the reason that the impacts are so important is every property in Norco pretty much is different. And so unfortunately, and I feel bad for you, because the truth of the matter is, I don't think any of us up here should be the bad guys. This should have been handled at the front desk of City Hall. And the only reason I'm going here is because we're going to be vilified for whatever the decision is here. But our job is to protect the municipal code. One of the key components that this does not address is the contiguous property between properties. So people can say this is personal, but all I'm trying to do is draw this back to the municipal code. Personally, not personally, as I look at this building, it is specifically the type of building that when we said 14-feet, 864, this was the building that we were trying to protect the residents from. It's too big, per the municipal code. And there's other things, if you look at the architectural review, there needs to be, it's supposed to fit your house, there's all kinds of things that are already in place that are now being codified by that committee. You know, it's tough for me, you're a policeman, I totally respect your profession, you're a Norco boy, I get all that stuff. Unfortunately, six months ago, there was a huge realization that occurred, and it's taken a long time for people to sort of come forward. The problem is, nobody was following the code. Now, we can say, "Let's just let you do whatever you want to do," but then we're not following the code. Now that we know, there's no going forward, there's none of that stuff, we have to follow the code. Personally, again, I have to go by what Alma told me. She was very confused about this drawing. So this drawing immediately should have been stopped, and you should have been informed that you have to go back and do it again. You're responsible for the honesty, and I'm not saying you're dishonest, but you're responsible for the accuracy of your application. And as Ted pointed out last time, there's a lot of problems with it. There's a lot of things that, we can go through them, which aren't accurate. I don't think it's your fault. So anyway, that's all I have to say right now, and I'll say more later to address some of the questions, and thank you for listening to me.
Robin, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions either.
Well, I do address some of that, if I remember most of it. Yeah, absolutely. As far as the measurements on the house not being there, I went over that with Alma. I showed her what I had initially, and I actually had the house drawn a little bit bigger on one of my first drawings, and that's what she flagged and said, "No, this isn't to scale." And I said, "Okay," because I basically took the, if you look at the two little outriggers where my kitchen and the bathroom are on the backside of the house there, I originally had the building drawn just as a square all the way across there, so it actually showed the house being bigger. That was one of those things I had to clarify with her and go over, and that's when I got the parcel map from the city, did the satellite imagery, went through my laser, measured it all when I drew it. It is to scale. So you can take a ruler on there, it's a 110 scale, you can take a ruler, and it's very easy to measure each side and get the measurements. So it is to scale, it is accurate, I did do my best. The application process, I went over all the application at the front counter. I asked questions about it and said, "This kind of seems like this application process is for a commercial business." And they agreed that this shouldn't really apply to residents, however, the rules that were made in 2010, this is how we're going to proceed. So I followed all of the rules, I followed all of the codes, all of the municipal code that's current, not what's being worked on right now that may or may not be voted on in the future to change the rules of today, tonight, the current rules. And when I applied for this, back last August, and when I talked to her in June and July of last year, I followed all of the current municipal codes that were in place. There was nothing that wasn't followed. That's why I had to go back and submit three or four different plans to her to make sure that I met everything. That's why I moved the building from being centered in my yard where it'd be even more obscured from the house, and I shrunk the garage doors from being wider to narrower to meet the, one, so I wouldn't drive across the animal keeping area, even though that's not part of code. I shrunk them in size also, so I would meet the 40 percent rule on, an opening on... I shrunk them in size also, so I would meet the 40% rule on an opening on the side of the building. I jumped through every hoop and everything that was asked of me, and then some, and I did follow the municipal code. And I understand you don't like that I followed the rules, but the rules are in place for a reason, and I followed them.
Well, let me address that. Okay. 1813, 1814 does not apply to a CUP accessory building. You have a five-foot setback there. I took, this gentleman went, and I took Alma, and we looked at a building five feet across. The building next door has lost significant property value. You cannot put a building this size five feet. That's why you have to judge the impacts. So, while I understand what staff is telling you, my suggestion is, is that maybe I'll be happy to meet with you, I'll walk with you through that code, I will show you that some of the problems, and pretty much everybody up here knows that there's a huge problem that the municipal code, I mean, the reason for a CUP is it's an extra privilege. And what was happening is, they were applying, as I said, they were applying the rules for an accessory building that's within the municipal code to a conditional use permit. So unfortunately, I guess we can beg to differ, but the truth of the matter is, I can sit down and cite verse, that there's a real problem with this building. I also, I don't know why Alma, she didn't explain to us why all of a sudden there's no measurements on the house. I just think that, see, understand, this site plan is really important, and it has not been given the importance it's supposed to have. Everything that happens from the moment this is approved is based on this site plan. One of the problems we've had is that it goes to the planning director's office, and then what happens is, is that it is then supposed to be, every time there's a change, it's supposed to go through planning pretty much, except for some ministerial ones that are outlined in the municipal code. But essentially, what was happening was, this plan was then being essentially redrawn, it would be a different plan, and the person doing the inspection wouldn't know the difference. We've got some examples of that. So this plan, per the municipal code, is supposed to be really perfect, and one of the problems, and again, I'm not faulting you. I mean, we may disagree, but I totally understand your position, but I hope you'll understand mine. I have to protect the municipal code, because now I'm aware of some really serious problems. Part of the reason you're enjoying Norco is because people like me, people like lots of people on this council, had to stand their ground, even when they liked the applicant. They wanted to approve it, but their job is to protect the community, and this is one of the last communities of large lots. And these buildings, while they may improve your property values, a lot of people don't say anything, because they don't want to engage in neighbor wars. I know for a fact you have a neighbor that does not want this building. I received a call from one of your neighbors. So, once again, I have you telling me they love it, I have the neighbor telling me they don't. I'm in a really awkward position here. I sat with Alma, with the city manager, for almost an hour and a half discussing this property. And so, I'm having a real confusing time here with the information you're being given, the information she gave me, I mean, it's confusing. So the only thing I can go to is, no impact study was done to, they didn't walk those properties, and they didn't go, what will a five-foot building that's this high in the air do to the house behind? They didn't look at it and go, you know, I don't think that's going to work. So, I'm just having a problem all the way around, and I realize everybody wants to think it's personal, but the reason you think it's personal is because nobody's been following the code. Well, now we all know, we've known for six months. In fact, we're not even rewriting the code. What we're doing is, we're clarifying what was approved in 2010. I totally get there's a new Norco, there's not going to be any horses. Your problem's going to be, is how do you protect the large lots? Because once you, once you don't have horses and you don't have the large animals, how do you protect them? And so, that's also one of the challenges that I have, so I have to encourage that kind of animal keeping. Once again, I, again, I totally understand your position, but I really hope you're going to understand mine, and this may well pass tonight. So, that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again.
As far as the setbacks, I have 17-foot setback on the north side. I have 25-foot setback on the south side. On the west side, I have five-foot, which is off my rear property line. There's probably, and I haven't measured it to tell you an exact number, but I would estimate there's over 100 feet to the neighbor behind me's house, if not more, because I know my property line is 200-foot from the back to the front. And so, conservatively, there's got to be at least 100 from the back of where my property line is, let alone the building, to their building.
And to answer that truthfully, staff should have put that in their report. Because my problem is, is once again, we're sitting here discussing this, and staff isn't doing, I mean, there was a building we approved that was this big, it was next to a drainage ditch. It's going to be fine. This one may work, it may not work. But the point is, nobody walked out there, and per her own statement, they didn't check to see what impacts would have on this. And in terms of...
Mr. Mayor, I respect your opinion, but I did not interrupt you during your...
I'm sorry.
...time, and I wasn't quite done.
Great.
Furthermore, like I said, the building that was approved, three houses up from me, that's the same exact size, same lot, same house, tract, model home, he has to drive through his animal keeping area, and then a 640-square-foot RV carport was put on next to it after the fact it was approved also. I'm not asking for that, I just want the building. As far as the neighbor complaining, there's a process for that. If he didn't comply and do it the correct way, and he called you personally, that's not the correct way. He has a form. That neighbor that you're talking about, he's right next door to me. I know who he is, I spoke with him, I'm friends with him. He initially had some concerns. I walked him into my backyard, I staked it off, I showed him where it was going to be, and after talking with him, he had no concerns, because he has a tree that's 50-foot tall that's going to be obscuring his view of the building. So that's not even an issue. I'm friends with all my neighbors. I had neighbors speak at the planning commission, that as far as affecting their properties, if anything, as these other people that have all spoke tonight, it's going to raise the property value around there and the comps. So therefore, if anything, I'm improving the neighborhood. But like I said, the setback, the only setback that's five-foot is from my rear property line, and there's ample room to the house behind me, that now, if you want to say that it's blocking anything of them, they have 100-plus feet to the building, and that's a conservative estimate. I'm sure there was more, but I can't even think, because you threw out so many things, I didn't take notes on it, but, like I said, I followed every rule that was in place. I've jumped through hoops. This has been going on for six months plus. You know, I met with Alma before I even applied. I went and discussed with her what I wanted to do. You know, I resubmitted plans, I moved the building, I shrunk the building, I shrunk the doors, I moved it again. I've done everything to minimize the impact on all neighbors, including meeting with the neighbors, showing them what I wanted to do, walking them in my backyard, talking with them, and not a single one had a complaint once I eased their feelings. The neighbor that, I'm assuming is the one that talked to you, he had filed a complaint against another neighbor who had an 1,100-square-foot building approved the month before this one was approved at planning commission, and that letter's still on file at the city clerk's front desk there, Alma's front desk, and basically, his concern was whether that neighbor was going to run a business out of his building, because another former neighbor did that. And I assured him, look, I don't have a business, I work for the city. There's not going to be a business run out of it, there's nothing like that. Like I said, I've met all current codes, all current rules. I've done everything the staff, city staff has asked of me. I've moved it several times, I've resubmitted plans several times. This has been a very expensive and long process, and it just, it seems like it shouldn't have been this difficult to put a building in someone's backyard. You know, if I would have had the means, or my father would have had the means years ago, it would have been put up before all these rules were in place. You know, once I purchased the property, this was my immediate plan. I had to take care of some other stuff and some other financial obligations. Now I have the money, I've had it for a while now, and I'm waiting to do it, and it's just, it feels like this is being prolonged, and I understand that you're worried about animal keeping in Norco. I'm telling you, I will have ample animal keeping on my property. I will have ample animal keeping on my property. That's not going to go away. And to try and preserve this for the next guy, I am the next guy. I'm not leaving this town. This is where I grew up, this is where I plan to stay. This is my town. I am the future of this town, and I'm going to have animal keeping. And I'm going to ask my friends that move to this town, hey, do you have animal keeping then, why are you moving to Norco? You know, there are several people I work with that are all in the process of trying to find houses in Norco, because they want animal keeping. It's not because any other reason, that's why we love this town. You know, I spent several years in different cities trying to work my way to get back to this town, and now I'm here, and I'm trying to do what I want with my property, and what's best for my property, and it fits all city codes, and I just don't understand how it was appealed when it was a unanimous vote, yes, from the planning commissions, it's assigned by the city council to take care of this job. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the appeal hearing, bring it back for council discussion and action. Ted, would you like to start?
You know, as I said last month, it's part of the code, it's not the 18 section, it's a CUP process. This town start in 2010, members of the city council went through and tried to prevent these large buildings from spreading up all over town. And what has occurred since then, and in that, we're not changing the rules of the game midstream. Somehow or another, the rules haven't been followed. In part of that, there are, there was actually part of this exhibit that was done in 2010 that actually talked about plans, accessory building reviews, that were approved by the city council, that I know aren't being used, and doing the review on these projects. They're not being given to the planning commission. I sat on the planning commission, and it wasn't until recently that the actual planning commission is getting the conditional use permit submitted by the applicant. That has been the problem. They've got people following the rules. I agree that some of this, he's right down there, the T, he's got it right there, but the problem comes back to the CUP hasn't been followed, the way people get permits. I can show you that these two exhibits have not been used in the process. In looking at, as I said earlier, in looking at the application that was submitted by the applicant for the CUP, his answers, very vague. They're not qualitative. They don't answer, as part of the CUP process, what should be answered. Their request should have been some topographical numbers put on here, to show elevations of buildings, the fact that what is the effect on the complete neighborhood? And those are, it's like Kevin said, some of these are impact studies that are done. CUP process is a tough process, and yes, what we have been using doesn't fit residential buildings. That's kind of why we had the ad hoc committee. But what disappoints me in the way this was done, is that the planning commission never got this information to make a decision, a qualified decision, on the actual issuance of the CUP. They're basically given the staff report, because the applicant couldn't answer the question. I don't think staff, if this was a commercial building, I can't see staff taking that process and those answers that were given by an applicant and changing it so it fits it. So I'm just, again, nothing against the applicant, it's the CUP process that hasn't been followed. And that's what I think is where our problem is, and that's what we addressed in the ad hoc committee, is how it was done. And I'm not opposed to sending this back to the planning commission, with the idea that they review the CUP process, so that it can be done correctly, and so it's handled correctly, and let the qualitative answers that the applicant needs to put in. Thank you.
Kevin?
You know, the analogy is, is as a policeman, you catch a speeder, and the speeder says, well, everybody else is speeding, you've never caught me before. Unfortunately, I now know that the process hasn't been followed, and I feel sorry you had to jump through hoops, but the problem is, you were made to jump through the wrong hoops. The most important part of the CUP process is you're giving, you're given a special privilege, which means it's not going to be easy, and it's to protect the neighbors. A CUP is to protect the neighbors, 100%, and that process should be difficult, because those people depend on a certain zoning. So I understand that maybe people are going to rise up and take those rights away from their neighbors, that's what I'm hearing. I don't think that's what you mean, but unfortunately, at this point, we've, you happen to be the speeder, and I don't know how I can go, I mean, I heard something today that shocked me. There was an issue that came up, and it's not exempted in terms of a permit, and yet, that's just the way we do it. I still, we still got that attitude. That's wrong. And so, unfortunately, the law is the law to protect all of us. In terms of a business going there, I have to mention, part of the reason those properties are so valuable, maybe you won't move, but what happens is, people move businesses into them. We have them all over town. That's why they're so valuable, not just to park a motorhome, but because they want to put a business in there. So that's one of the other concerns, and one of the things I hope the ad hoc committee is covering, is that we actually have no way to stop it. It has to be a voluntary inspection, so you could move a business in there. So, that's about all I have to say, and again, it's not that I feel bad about this. I really feel bad about this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kevin. Berwin?
Well, I don't think it's that gentleman's fault, that this is not supposedly right. I mean, he's went, paid his money and went through all the stuff he was supposed to go through, and the planning commission approved it 5-0, and I just, I'm having a hard time right now, but, like I said, I don't think it's his fault, and I don't think, I think until we have a meeting with the planning commission and staff and get the results from ad hoc committee, I don't know what we're going to do here. I mean, staff approves it, and the planning commission approves it, it's kind of confusing, and I can see where the gentleman would be confused about it, so I don't know right at this moment.
Robin?
I'm frustrated, to say the least, with the process. We go back to the date on the application, and it's August. We tout ourselves as, you know, that our staff is focused on customer service, and working with our residents, and helping them with their thing, their projects, and what I've heard from Scott is, that's what he got at the desk. They asked for revisions, made some recommendations, and he went back and did those and brought them back. So, our city looks to provide good customer service, our staff is trying to provide good customer service, and help people with, on this particular application, is obviously not one that lends itself to residential applications. It's clearly a commercial application. Then we go to the municipal codes and how they're applied, and when they're applied, and it has been inconsistent. Again, that would be at the fault of staff, and ultimately, because we are the governing body of that staff, the city council. And this isn't something, in my opinion, that's been going on for just six months or whatever. It's been a culture of the organization. Anytime you're looking to change the culture of an organization, the way things get done, it takes a long time. But ultimately, in my opinion, maybe, there's been mistakes made. So then, where does that mistake, and the consequences of that mistake, where ultimately does that lie? Do we punish, in my opinion, residents who have done what they've been asked with city staff, and make them miserable since ultimately August? And then I think back, well, we're supposed to be providing customer service, we're supposed to be providing leadership. We have not done any of that through any of these processes, in my opinion, since I've been on council. We have finally recognized in the last couple of months that there is an issue, and ultimately, this isn't, and I know everybody's told you this, Scott, like, it's not about you, it's not about you, but when you're the one sitting there, it is. And so, it's hard for residents to go through that process, because we can sit up here and say, oh, it's not personal, but it is for that person, and the neighbors, and everybody else that's involved. So at some point in time, we've said, there's a mistake, things aren't being followed, we're not doing what we need to do. not doing what we need to do. And so we're putting a process in place to fix it going forward. My concern with the appeals to this point is that we're going back and taking back things that we've said, and we're going back and we're taking back things that we've approved, at what expense? So we can prove a point, so that we can stand firm. I don't think there's any wrongdoing in saying, you know what? Yeah, that building got approved. And guess what? We made a mistake and we weren't following our municipal code. And we need to look at making things, our applications more clear, and we need to have a meeting with planning commission and council so we're all on the same page and everybody's really there and we're all focused on our end goal, which is protecting animal keeping, keeping our property values high in perpetuity. So I get that, but I think at some point in time, we need to cut our losses and say, from this point forward, this is what we're doing. We cannot keep going back and taking things back and changing things when people have already started the process. And that's where my frustration lies with this. And I've said almost since the time I've been here, that the system was broken. This isn't right. This isn't, we shouldn't be having these appeals, we shouldn't be doing these. But I was too new to know, where is it broken? What's the problem? What's the issue? And the time that I've been here and reading the land use policy and the general plan and municipal code and doing that stuff, you can see, like Kevin has said, where the issues are. And sometimes it is a lack of enforcement. Sometimes it's a lack of clarity. Sometimes it's a lack of communication with the resident or the applicants or whatever the case may be. There are several factors at play in this issue. It's not one thing. And so for me, looking at this specific issue, I have a hard time because when I looked at the drawings, I thought, well, yeah, I could put my chicken coop there and I could put my goat pen here and all that kind of stuff. I saw where that all could be worked around. I saw in the minutes, the planning commission approved at 5-0. I saw that he's not driving across his animal keeping area. He's under the 40%, which is the current standard. And so then we go back to what now, kind of like what Berwin has said. And so I'm torn, I'm frustrated. I see a light at the end of the tunnel with the work that the ad hoc committee is doing. And I'm hoping that that will resolve the issues that, you know, I just talked about. So I'm just, that's kind of where I'm at, because people say, I don't tell, talk very much about where I'm at and what I'm thinking in my head. So there you have it. I'm not 100% sure, you know, how I'm going to vote. I want to see what my, the rest of the council has to say and what some of our options are here to make this right for the city and the staff and for the residents.
Thank you, Robin.
As difficult as this is, I look back to, I think it was 2008, 2009, 2010, and I was on the planning commission and participated in crafting the present accessory building ordinance that we have today and what we look at. You'll never understand how much time we spent with that, trying to be as objective as possible in a subjective situation. For months, believe me, it made my head hurt. That's the best we had at that time, in the situation that we were presented with six, seven, eight years ago. The accessory building today, ordinance, it has run its course. And I think that we all recognize that, hence that with the ad hoc committee. All the comments, I feel by all the council members up here, are all correct. Whether we disagree or not, they're all true and correct statements. Everything comes back with this change that our general plan is small plot agriculture, animal keeping lifestyle, and how our land use element contributes to our general plan. That's what it all has to be based on. And part of that frustration, how we interpret, you know, certain codes, whether it's 1845 or 1813 or whatever, it's, we're all on the same page, but at least with myself, that I have a different interpretation of that. And the ordinance needs to be changed, but we, when this application was made, it was handled with what the ordinance is today. If we don't like the ordinance, we change the ordinance. We don't ignore it or we don't make it work for you or make it work for someone else. So that's kind of my feeling right now. I believe the planning commission did their due diligence. They approved this project 5-0. It fits the code today, whether, if we like the code or not. My recommendation on this item is to uphold the planning commission's approval and just deny the appeal.
Yep.
I don't, well, no. But I want to ask, is there any further discussion by the council?
I might make a couple of comments.
Okay, John, go ahead.
And it's really not, I don't believe, the problem is particularly with the provisions of the Norco municipal code. I mean, that the issue is that when a bill, and this is what happened 2010, when a proposed building exceeds a certain square footage, then a conditional use permit is required. The substance of the code and what needs to be applied, whether it's a conditional use permit for a commercial building, which generally, I mean, 99% of them are, or whether it's for a residential structure, or you need to have facts sufficient to be able to make the findings that are set forth in the code. This isn't so much a problem of the code being a problem, but rather the facts that have been provided to the planning commission or the city council in order to make the findings they need. I think both the planning commission and the city council to date have believed that they've had sufficient information to make those findings, and they've been a part of every resolution approving every CUP that has been granted. And again, you can see in from page three, without beating it to death, that the requested CUP won't adversely affect the general plan or public convenience or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. The most significant one, and it's the one where I think that the, how do I say this? That hasn't been explored in the past, maybe as broadly as it has been recently, is the requested use will not adversely affect the adjoining land uses and the growth and development of the area in which it's proposed to be located. That ultimately, I think that that comes down as a practical matter and for the accessory building application to the issue that comes before the planning commission and the council. And so that if you, the planning commission approves an application or the city council approves an application on appeal, you have to feel comfortable that you can make the finding that their use won't adversely affect the adjoining land uses and growth and development of the area in which it's located. And in order to do that, you have to believe that you have been presented sufficient facts by the applicant or staff to be able to make the finding. Again, ultimately, and yet the last two really don't apply so directly. The size and shape of the site proposed for the use is adequate to allow the full development of the proposed use. That's probably not applicable unless you interpret that to mean that things like you can't drive across the animal keeping area, that the development has to fit the animal keeping use or the, that's adjacent to the development. And the traffic generated by the proposed use won't impose an undue burden. That's not relevant, really. That's a commercial issue. So bottom line is that if you feel that in this case or in other cases or future cases, if this code remained in place, that you can make the findings, then you can approve the application. If you feel that you don't have enough information, either you can't make the findings or you have the planning commission look at it again with specific direction to address those. I mean, one of the difficulties and issues is the requested use will not adversely affect adjoining land uses. It's really addressed more in the context of SEQA, which isn't applicable to these kinds of uses, and it's, which is really a commercial application. But if, but notwithstanding the red words in the staff report, if you believe that you've received enough testimony and evidence from any source to either, to either make the finding or not be able to make the finding, you can do that. Again, if you, probably the most appropriate way, if you think that, and certainly from this end of the table, that there are a lot of things that, information that wasn't provided that needs to be provided, that the appropriate response probably is to send it back to the planning commission to gather that information and make maybe even the same decision. Alternatively, if you feel comfortable with it, you approve it. If you don't, you deny it.
The only comment on that, John, was I think on, like the first finding, it still remains subjective.
Oh, the, yep.
And that, I think, is the difficulty all of us wrestle with, along with the planning commission. I would not support going back to the planning commission on this, that they've made their decision, it's our decision to make at this point.
Clearly, the ultimate decisions in all these findings and every condition you submit are subjective in the sense that you provided evidence and based upon that, you are making a decision that is sufficient to either meet the burden for making the finding or it's not. But yeah, that is.
But that's the hardest finding.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
To make objectively.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like the third finding is simple to make if it's 40% or less.
Yeah, which is one of the reasons, obviously, the ad hoc committee is addressing these types of concerns.
Does council have any other further comments?
Mr. Mayor? You made a comment of not sending it back to planning, and I'll disagree with you on that. And the reason being is, first of all, the planning department, or the planning commission, did not have the CUP application in front of them. What they received was the staff report that they, they made from the application. None of the commissioners had the actual application that the applicant filled out for the CUP process. So I disagree with you. I think it should go back to planning so they have the opportunity to get the facts and that should have been done the first time through the CUP, that they get it and make their decision.
How would that application change anything? That was a public, it was a public hearing that planning had and testimony was taken? That, I'm making that assumption, that the planning commission would have had every opportunity to ask the applicant questions and would have, and then they based their decision on the findings and those conversations. I don't see, Ted, where the...
Well, Mayor, if, if you have the application in front of you, you can formulate your questions. Unfortunately, they did not have the actual application in front of them. They were relying on the staff report to make their decision and not the application. And you have the, you had the full application in your, in our agenda items here. They didn't have that. That's what I'm asking, is give them the opportunity at least to go through the process. As you well know, it is not the code. It's the CUP application that you need, the qualitative answers that weren't provided by the applicant. They were provided by staff, looking at what they had, based upon how they get it through.
But I would think the planning commission would ask.
I would have hoped so.
Questions.
I would have hoped so. I don't know. I don't know if they did or not. And that's part of the problem of this whole process that we have, is that when I was on planning commission, we never got those, those applications either. Because I would have started asking a lot more questions. And unfortunately, that wasn't done back then. It is now, that they get it. But at that time, it was not. So I disagree with you that I, if, if it goes back to planning and they want to make the good decisions and the application, because that is their, that is their due diligence on this process, I'm good with that then. But I think they need to make the decisions that they're, the last, I believe the last meeting in December or this January, they actually got the applications for a CUP. It was never done before. So I don't think they had the opportunity to look at all the facts and get the facts necessary to make the proper decision, because it's a twofold decision. It's a decision on the building and it's a, and it's a decision on the CUP. And I don't think they've got the necessary information and the factual information they needed to make that decision on the CUP.
Can I jump in there?
Absolutely.
You know, one thing that, one of the, these aren't commercial applications, correct? This is not a commercial application, right?
Not sure.
A CUP is not a commercial application. This was designed, where I'm going is, is that we keep acting and we're being told by staff that these are commercial applications, that they apply to commercial, they apply to SEQA. 2010, what happened is, is that we, we expected a new application. And it took me a while to realize when this was brought forth in June, that the application never changed. Now, I can guarantee you, there's a couple of people on planning commission, and no offense to the applicant, had they read this, "Explain how the requested use will not adversely affect the adjoining land uses and the growth and development of the area in which it is proposed to be located." Answer, adjoining land has already developed, neighborhood and landlocked. Now, the problem is, is while I understand Robin's point, and I really do, that's why this is really upsetting, this never should have gotten to us. But the bottom line is, had Bob Leonard seen that? Guess what? Had Danny Azavito seen that? Guess what? Had you seen that as a planning commissioner? I'm sorry. And it was hard fought. It took three months to get these to the planning commissioners. For six months, this council has been made aware through letters that the fact that the impact studies were not being done before this even came. And so I totally get why, you know, there's a part of me that's going, yeah, we let this one through. But the problem is, my job is to protect the municipal plan. And you see the few, little few people here, 2010? Berwin and I sat in a room that filled the entire annex at the school district. And the truth of the matter is, what's occurring here is wrong. And so I totally get that we want a kumbaya and go along, but we're doing a disservice and the municipal plan isn't just a document. It's not just something that, you know, somebody made up. It is how we protect the rights of the people that live in this community. And we're all aware that, and I totally understand, you know, we want to make, play nice, but I recommend, along with Ted, that we take this back to planning. I think that we do everything we can to help this applicant. But the bottom line is, is I totally disagree that, that the hoops that he jumped through were the correct hoops. That's not his fault, but that's also not the residents in the city of Norco who depend on that plan, where they put their businesses, where they have their homes. They depend on that zoning to protect them. And so I can't, truthfully, I want to approve this, but I can't. So the best I can come up with is, if he's going to make a motion, I will second it, send it back to planning and let the planning commissioners work this out. Otherwise, I will have to vote to deny it, which it still may pass.
So my question is then, how would this, if you were on planning, how would this application affect your decision on a finding?
The problem is, the findings were never made. I can't help that. What happened is, and Alma admitted it, this is the one we looked at, Alma never looked at the impact study. She never looked at what would happen to the adjoining neighborhoods. In fact, all those buildings from 2010. And you know, one of the things of leadership, isn't that I take responsibility for everything. It's that when I find it out, staff or whoever's responsible, that's when I take responsibility. I had every, until, actually, what prompted all this was when we overturned planning and we approved the two buildings where we were, in fact, that's the other thing in this. Everybody thought legally, because they were always, they were always claimed to have to be approved by the planning department, these things were planned. They, the people really thought, because I called after we overturned... They, the people really thought, because I called after we overturned those two that one night, and every planning director told me, oh, well, I thought we had to approve these. They thought they had to approve them. And you know what? I've talked to other planning directors, commissioners from your era, they all thought they had to approve them. And so, what we had is this weird thing going on, in which everybody had amnesia about 2010. Now, that isn't the residents' fault. That's not my fault. All I can do is, at this point, I've known this for six months, and this council, like it or not, over and over and over again, has been informed for six months, June, July, that this process was flawed, and there were problems with it, and impacts that I don't, until the impacts are done, I can't even answer your question.
Okay, then I would, my contention would be that, when the planning commission makes a formal recommendation to council, they have made the findings. Would I be correct in that assumption, John?
Well, adopting the resolution, whether it's you, or whether it's city council, that, a part of the resolution is making those findings. I think the only question is whether or not they had sufficient facts before them to make them, and they thought they did, and being contended that they didn't, that there was more information which might have affected them. But they, they made the findings, just a question of supporting factual data.
Robin, Berwin?
I'm just going to go back to the fact that we probably, we're going to have to agree to disagree on a few things, obviously, and for me, it goes back to, it's not about finding blame or placing blame, although, in my opinion, as the governing body of the organization, and in my opinion, I take the blame. There are going to be some buildings that I drive by in this town, that I'm going to have to say, you know what? We made a mistake. In fact, when I got on council, fellow council member said, "Meet me here at this place, so I can show you something." Went over there, and it was a building, huge building, and that person said, "That's what we're looking at. That's what we're fighting for. This was a mistake." And that's when buildings were approved over the counter. And guess what? That serves for that era as a reminder, and spawned the 2010 stuff. So I don't, I find no shame in the fact that mistakes are going to be made, and that during my tenure on this council, there are going to be decisions that I make that people don't like, and that part of being up here is learning as you go. And like I said, I've read the general plan, I've read the land use stuff, and I under, I completely understand, Kevin, completely understand. But again, then it needs to be enforced consistently across the board, and the fact of the matter is, it is not enforced consistently in this town, and it hasn't been. And so, we're not going to go back, I don't want to go back, and say, no, we're not going to do this, six months after the fact. Are there areas we need to work on? Yes, and those have all been addressed, and I think there are plans in process. There's joint meetings that are going to take place, there's the ad hoc committee that's going to take place. Those things are going to take place to fix things. I am not in the business of rehashing issues, to rehash issues and drag residents through the anxiety and stress of this process, and those types of things. So we are working on a process to alleviate and fix this. And so, that's where I'm at for right now.
Let's address one thing, and I totally understand, Robin. I guess, part of who we protect, though, are the people who depend on the municipal code, and what about their stress? What about when these buildings go up and they have no voice? They have no voice. That's a fact, because people either don't read this stuff, they don't understand it, they misapply codes, they have no voice. And that's a fact. So, anyway, I will make a motion that we send it back to planning. Oh, sorry, Berwin.
Berwin had any further comments?
Yeah, I don't see that, that we should punish this gentleman for all the work that he's done, and the money he's been out on all this stuff here. I think, I think the planning commission, by approving it 5-0, I think they did the best job that they thought they could do. They worked with what they had to work with, and I feel like that they went and checked everything out like it's supposed to be, according to the plans here, and I don't see that it'd be that gentleman's fault. That mistake has been made. I mean, he's been told by the planning commission, he could have his building and his permit and all that, and I don't see that that's anybody's fault. I don't see that we need to send it back to the planning commission, because they've already hashed it over and voted on it 5-0. And I just don't see that that, that that person should be punished. And I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve, that we uphold the planning commission's ruling on it. That's my thoughts.
Motion in a second?
Council members, Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash.
No.
Mayor Protem Hoffman.
No.
Mayor Newton.
Yes.
That is a 3-2 vote, a motion carries to uphold the planning commission.
We'll now move to city council, city manager, staff communications. Kevin?
Just a couple of things. I need to get some clarification on, I have a resident that came to me who apparently thought he was connected to sewer, and was not connected to sewer, and when he sold his home, he found out he had to put in a sewer, but he'd been paying sewer fees for five years. And so, then they told him they could only go back three years. So I'm wondering if maybe you could look into finding that out, and then maybe I can give you a call tomorrow, and you can do some preparation, or just some research into what that's about. And then, secondly, we talked about the stoplight at the corner of California and Sixth Street. As council may not be aware, I'd actually like to, if you have to agendize it, if you just have to look at it, we've had a lot of accidents since we made the change from the turn arrow staying, and then it turns green. It causes a lot of problems. We had, what, two accidents, three accidents in the last five days? We had a couple the last weekend. It costs money to do this change, so I don't know if it has to come before us, or what you recommend, but I'd either like to agendize that, or at least find out what it would take to look into it, to change that light. And then, I have some, there's a couple of things that I don't quite understand, and maybe we can just look at them. The property, there's a property next to a barn where apparently there's a code and compliance issue, but the people just keep piling the dirt there, so there's all kinds of problems going on. And then, I'll call you with that, but I'm not sure why we're doing that. And then, I'm just going to say it, I know there's a compliance issue, that house on California that's four stories high, there's a lot of people living in that. And I'm just wondering where we're at with that, and you know, that's something that's come up for the last seven years, and I'm just kind of wondering, at what point are we going to maybe do something about that? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Ted?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Berwin?
Just one thing, food for thought, we need to think about this, start thinking about it now, with all this rain we're having and everything. The trail fences are soon going to be out of sight because of the weeds, so we need to figure out somewhere in the near future how we can get money, or, I can't think what to call them. I call them convicts, cut the weeds. I don't care if it's politically correct or not, but if they've been convicted, they're a convict, anyway.
Incarcerated volunteers.
Okay, incarcerated volunteers, John, thank you. But I think that's something, because, last year, the weeds got totally out of control on this city right away and everything, so I think, and they caused mosquitoes, mosquitoes caused West Nile, so we need to think about that. Thank you.
I think you should refer to them as inmates. There's two different groups in prison. Robin?
Some good news, I did get a call from a resident last week, that West Coast Arborist did an excellent job in taking care of the cypress plants and pruning them correctly, and they look nice, so I would like to pass that along to staff, that that was greatly appreciated.
Lieutenant?
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of city council, residents and citizens. Tonight, I just have a brief presentation regarding a Norco Hills issue that has come up from time to time. We understand that there, with the residents and citizens that live in that area, there's been some complaints. It goes back as far as when I was assigned here, and that's been almost three years, that I've been aware of the problem. And so, what we're talking about is, is a lot of vehicle and pedestrian traffic that has encompassed illegal parking, loud noise complaints from the residents and citizens. It's resulted in damaged city and golf course property up there in the hills. There's been graffiti, there's been tagging, there's been a lot of trash and illegal dumping, and others, other issues associated with impacting the quality of life for the residents that live in that area. And the areas of concern I'm talking about include Valley Drive and Crestview Drive, Crossrail Lane and Friesian Street, the Hidden Valley Golf Course, and the other surrounding neighborhoods and areas. I don't want to leave anyone or any resident or neighborhood out. And this is a map of the general area. If I had a laser pointer, I'd kind of show you where the areas are, but it's basically Valley on the left side of the green area there, with the golf course comes down, and then, yeah, oh, it does work. Perfect, thank you. So we're talking about this area where it comes down from Crestview here, and then over, over in this area here, we're cross rail dead ends here. So when we looked at the problem, and I worked with the city manager on this, as well as some of the other city departments, we identified the stakeholders, obviously, we have the residents and citizens, the city manager, city council, code enforcement, but we also involved the Hidden Valley Golf Course management, as well as my office. And the planning encompassed the city manager and I working together. We actually did an onsite visit where we drove up to the location, we met with the other stakeholders, we looked at the problem, we identified the issues, and then we had collaborative meetings. We worked at tackling this issue in sort of a team, team atmosphere, team environment. We identified resource allocation, and we understood that there had to be some enforcement taken by the sheriff's office in order to have an impact. And the way we, we had been doing this before is, our patrol deputies, when they have the opportunity, because they are assigned to calls for service, but when they have the opportunity, they would be conducting extra patrol based upon the issues and complaints, but also the residents in that area had done a good job of contacting us with the problems. So we were formed of the issue, and we could provide a response. So basically, the sheriff's enforcement detail involved two separate dates, one in December, December 9th, and then again, a month later, January 13th. And we looked at the hours of where the issues were, were in, the issues were occurring, and obviously, it was the evening hours, late evening into the early morning hours. And our operation consisted of using our set team deputies and a sergeant to supervise the operations. And basically, this was just a low-level patrol, and we had a number of people that were parking in the no parking zones, and what happened is, they'd walk off the beaten path, they would drink alcohol, they would break bottles, they would damage city property, and cause the issues that we were dealing with, and including walking upon the golf course. There was a large deposit of trash over the side, a lot of alcohol, a lot of various other refuse and unsightly things that were found at the locations. So what we did was, we basically contacted the violators, we educated them, we talked to them about the issues, and they were cited for the parking violations. So we, over the two evenings that we did in the enforcement, there were 28 parking citations issued, and one speeding violation. But in addition to that, the patrol deputies working the area have also issued 30 parking citations for the violations as well. So the important thing to note here is, I've talked about a collaborative process, the Hidden Valley Golf Course has been impacted as well. The city manager and I have, like I said, we've met with them, and we've involved them in this process, because what you see with the graffiti and the trash was visible from the street on their property. So obviously, this was an impact to them as well. So we've been working with them, we've met with them, they're in the process of removing the trash and debris pile that was on their property, they're in the process of cleaning up the graffiti that was, was done on their property, and they're in conversation with the city regarding trail improvement along Valley Drive. And if there's questions pertaining to that specific issue, I'd refer you to the city manager on that. But overall, the collaborative process worked in terms of having an impact. So the future planning is, our patrol deputies will continue, as they have the ability to, when they're not handling calls for service, to perform area checks in the area, will continue to educate, cite violations when necessary. Our set team deputies, what they do is called an environmental design review, they'll work with the golf course. And what that encompasses is, basically, we talked about it in our Business Watch presentation with the Norco Area Chamber of Commerce today, basically, just tips on how to harden yourselves, how to harden your business against theft, intrusion, trespassing, vandalism, and other issues associated with criminal activity. So that process will take place, the set team deputies will continue to monitor all of that activity, and then, of course, the collaboration will continue. Any questions?
Any questions? You're doing a great job.
Well, it's not me.
I know that.
It's the deputies. It's, and I got a hands, hands off to Andy for taking a step in this, and helping us out, and getting the direction we needed.
Well, moving forward with another great job, chief number one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, it appears Al Nino's arrived. It's a little late, delayed, it, just a little bit late, but we don't work for the National Weather Service, thank goodness. Sandbags are available at all three fire stations in the city, the Hamner Station, the Corredon Station, and Hillside Station, Sam being at the Hillside Station. Please visit your nearest one to get sandbags. I did have the luck of acquiring some convicts over the last couple weeks. We did have several thousand pre-filled at Hillside, but as of shortly before this meeting, those are all gone, and have been issued to residents. So it's back to bring your own shovel and fill 25 bags per resident, and that's that. Please drive slowly, drive safely. Starting tomorrow morning at 8:00, the Riverside County Fire Department, we will have nine swift water rescue team staff throughout the county through Monday. For those that aren't so lucky, and try to drive through places they shouldn't drive through, so please turn around, don't drown. Other than that, if you need anything from us, you know where to find us. Yes, Berwin, we've given them snorkels and goggles for this weekend, and Norc Stand's ready to assist.
Thank you, chief. Gina?
Just to follow up on that, is if you haven't downloaded or entered into the NICSIL program to do that this weekend, and also the city app, there's a lot of good communication going on there.
Thank you. Brian?
Just, it's glad to be back, and looking forward to 2017. Just one update, we'll be starting the landscaping project on Hamner. This would be north of Sixth Street, and we will also, then, right after that, continue the re-landscaping on Hamner, going south on Hamner as well.
Good job, Brian. And Mrs. Overstreet thanks you. Steve? Chad?
Just to piggyback on Eric's comments, I did want to relay that the property owner for the golf course has already put in fencing, wood fencing along Friesian and, excuse me, Valley and Crestview. So they've added a long segment that is one of the key areas where folks are pulling out the road and parking, so hopefully that will have a, hopefully have an immediate impact where people can't pull off a dirt road, so that's been a positive impact of the property owner already trying to participate and solve some of the issues. And to the other comments that were made by the council in relation, relation to the greenery that we're now getting because of the rain, I do want to remind residents and business owners that it, per municipal code, it is your responsibility to maintain the parkway in front of your home or business. So if you do have weeds, we do encourage you to remove them. The city does not have the resources to go to every location around the city that is greening up to remove them. We will selectively go through areas like trails where there is no adjacent in front of your home or business. So, if you do have weeds, we do encourage you to remove them. The city does not have the resources to go to every location around the city that is greening up to remove them. We will selectively go through areas like trails where there is no adjacent homes or properties, et cetera, for our resources. But we will wait until the rainy season is over and actually spray them, try to kill them off, and then we'll remove them with the volunteer crews that we get from other agencies. So, it is something you will see in immediate timeframe, depending how long this rain lasts, those, that greenery or weeds will, may get very large. But, because it's much tougher to actually pull those while they're green than while it's, when it's dead. So, that's just been our normal process. But just to kind of let you know, we are aware of it, and we're trying to develop an overall plan. But we do encourage residents and business owners to do their due diligence and their responsibility and maintain in front of their property as much as they can.
Thank you, Chad. Cheryl?
Nothing.
Mr. City Manager?
Not an ask from staff.
Okay. Then with that, words earned.